Same as the second pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next will be the approval of the minutes. Has everybody read the minutes? Are there any additions? Corrections? I didn't notice one. I already had mentioned the Marcy, it was just on the back of the regular minutes where we had an approval of Jesus and Taylor measure on these amended building permits. It says that I motioned to approve that and then I abstained from voting. I never motioned for that, so whoever made that motion, I remember who that was. So that'd be my correction.
Did you make it?
I'm pretty sure.
Commissioner Miller thinks he did, so that was the only thing that I seen, so. With that, if there's no other changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended without one error being corrected.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Miller makes a motion to approve the amended minutes, is there a second?
No.
Second by Commissioner Holmes, any more discussion on the amended minutes? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye, but I oppose. Minutes approved. Well, I guess that was the minutes for the special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Because there's two sets here, so. We'll just label it as the special meeting minutes and then we should have a motion to approve table or deny the minutes for the regular meeting. Does anybody see any mistakes, corrections, errors? Not entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes.
So I make a motion now?
Commissioner Miller makes a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes, is there a second?
Yes, I can.
Second by Commissioner Maiteri, is there any more discussion on the regular meeting minutes? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye, but I oppose. Minutes approved. Next on the agenda will be the approval of the agenda, are there any additions? Corrections, errors?
The agenda, I don't Chris Lake, but isn't going to show up.
Okay.
He has a family issue.
There was a meeting item for Scott Hannon to attend the meeting, but he had a scheduling conflict, so he will not be attending. It's not on the agenda here, but I know your previous agenda it said.
And we talked about the agenda with the road agreement. And I'll just touch base some way. I've been with the mayor and stuff like that, so whenever.
Okay, yeah, we can discuss that under old unfinished business and we'll just kind of. So if there's no other changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Holmes to approve the agenda, is there a second?
I'll check it.
Second by Commissioner Maiteri, is there any more discussion? Agenda, not hearing any, all those in favor say aye, but I oppose. Agenda approved. First item on the agenda will be Acacia Sacco with a staffing update.
Well, good morning, I'm excited to be here this morning and give a staffing update. So this is Vicki Schwab, she is the new administrative assistant, so she started last week. And Nancy Dice has officially been hired to fill the ag and natural resource position, and she will start July 1st. So proud to report that our office is almost completely staffed, or as of July 1st will be completely staffed.
That will be a small office.
So sat down, so hello, and that's all the apps. Good news, we started off good.
Okay, well, there you go.
All right.
Good.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Happy to be full.
Yes, okay.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda will be updating on public nuisance for 8080 Highway 83 South in Lynton. I did get a name or two of some other places that might be interested. Trying to be in contact with them and see if they want to come and take a look at it.
I know no matter where you go, you get heat on this field.
Well, I mean, right, I mean, it's still, I mean, I just, I mean, historically, road department had gone in there once. Think K&amp;H tore a house down or something, did something kind of similar. It's been so many times, Kevin cleaned it once or twice, it's been like the fourth or fifth time, so.
Really?
I've been a part of at least one, I know my dad, when he was commissioner, was a part of at least one, I think, and you might even been on the board. And I think the road department did that, but that was a, that was a different situation too, because from what I had talked about, it wasn't a lot of like personal items, it was like vehicles and, you know, like asking someone to go in and take care of some of these more personal type items, it should be somebody with a little bit of knowledge and like kind of cleaning and. I think the road guys came in and they tore out some trees, took out some cars, like it was like somewhere, it's like, yeah, this is obvious, take it out. I think they did it for like one day and it was gone, where this is kind of a different situation, so. I think.
You put a tarp up around the outside, but it's, what a mess.
It's like Aaron said, if it wasn't that close to the highway or the city, it wouldn't be an issue. But it's right there where everybody sees it.
I was at a property last week doing some work that would make Evans' place look pretty good, but it's out in the middle of nowhere and no one notices it, and I didn't even notice it until I literally go over the yard, so like you said, it's more so where it's at. And not that it's clean or like that, but if it wasn't right by the highway, there's other properties that are tough looking too, but.
Did the state push that a few years ago along the public highways?
I don't, I mean, I don't recall anything like that, I guess, but I'm sure if it enters in the right of way, it could still be an issue, yeah, they would.
They're right of way, you gotta be out so far.
Right, I mean, if there were situations like that, absolutely, I think the state would.
Or visibility and everything, yeah.
I do have some, a couple names of some companies, like not just individuals, a company similar to Arrow that do.
Arrow came back down on Friday and looked at it again. They were supposed to send me another quote or a new quote, but I don't have it as of right now, so.
Okay, well, and I've gotten the names from, you know, because as other people are listening to us, they're like, hey, have you called these guys? Oh, no, I never thought of them, right? You know, so I did have a couple more names I wanted to reach out to and we'll see if, if, I mean, if we get several bids, someone's gonna probably do it at some point, so.
And I would personally like to see it done before winter. It's got to get done before winter.
See it before your centennial.
I think as soon as possible.
It'd be nice, don't see that happening, yeah.
As soon as possible, but at the same time, I also know that the, all the attention we brought on it hasn't stopped the mess, it's still, you know what I mean? Like usually even just talking about it, it's like, oh, nothing new is coming, well, that's not the case either, so. We'll just have to continue working on it till we can find someone that can do it, so. But that, unless anybody else has another update on it or anything, just the search kind of continues. Joe's working from one angle, I got a few names I can reach out to, see if someone will give us a price in the timeline. Until we find someone that will, I guess we'll just keep looking, so. Next item on the agenda for old unfinished business will be the road agreement with City of Lynton. Commissioner Holmes, got an update on that?
Yeah, okay, I talked to the mayor about it, and what they, he had talked to, I suppose, Skylar and their foreman, and they got an agreement right now. And I said, well, I said, agreement's fine, it's just when you get new people or new commissioners or city council people, then everybody's wondering, well, what's going on here? And he basically said, well, maybe we should just have it in writing, we got this kind of agreement? And I said, that's fine, then everybody's on the same board. And, you know, I think actually I wrote to pretend Skylar was going to their meeting today or tonight, the way it sounded. So, you know, as long as, you know, they're in agreement, the two, and it works out better if they're in agreement, the two people in charge. And as long as they come up with some kind of agreement, this is how it is, each, then commissioners have agreements, they have an agreement, this is what we're doing, fine.
Get it in writing.
Get it, get it always in writing, yeah.
Just so that 10 years from now, they're not going, well, that's not our job, and this is, if, like you said, as long as we're all agreeing, let's just put in paper what we're agreeing to and be done with it.
Exactly, and be done with it.
Because these, like now you take this overlay project, well, everybody wants that road till it's time to overlay it, but it's whose job is it really? Well, you know, 20 years ago, we agreed, well, that's, so I agree completely. As long as them guys can come to an agreement, I don't really see a scenario where I probably won't agree with it, so. They're the ones doing the work most days anyway, they should be the ones, and same with the City of Lynton. To be fair, the pavement benefits the City of Lynton, you know, I mean, if they, whatever agreement they want to come to, I mean, really in the end for the county, it's, the benefit is to the city just having more pavement there, so if they want to take care of more or less, I think it should kind of be up to them, we'll just, whatever, so I'm fine with that. All right. Well, with that, we are up to the equalization of assessments, but we're a little bit early. Can we do a canvassing board member, that should be quick, huh?
Yep.
The next item at 10 o'clock will be the canvassing board member, so you're looking for an additional member?
Usually we have a commissioner to sit on it. And the canvassing is going to be on the 24th. And I'll probably hold it like. I don't really think that should wait for some ballots to come in that morning, we won't do it at 10.
Sounds like a good job for Don.
I should.
Yeah. Well, the reason I state that is, my dad's up for elections, I have conflicting interests, that's not good. And Commissioner Miller has a contested race technically, because there's a race in Canada, so.
You can't be on it.
Right, and so really, because Maiteri is not a candidate, Holmes not a candidate, and Don's not a candidate. So it'd be one of those here, the only ones about conflicting interests, so. Like you said, sounds like Don was getting elected to a position, well, he didn't show up, so. Unless one of you guys really wants to be on it, I kind of feel like a fair punishment for missing the meeting, you get to get on the candidacy board.
Just don't beg, they cost me 20 bucks.
Well, there you go, like you can pay for that. So I guess I, motion to appoint Commissioner Everly to the canvassing board?
Yeah.
Commissioner Miller makes that motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Maiteri, any more discussion on the appointment of Commissioner Everly to the canvassing board? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye, but I oppose. Commissioner Everly is here by the point of the canvassing board. Well, a wise man wants to be the world's man by those who show up, so if you're not here, I guess he'll get the shit run, so, okay. Well, it is 9:15 now. So we'll start the equalization of cities. Is there any? Nobody's here, just.
Do you guys, I gave you guys all the pamphlet?
Sure.
We don't have a tax director right now. Josh, do you want to go through with it or?
If I remember, yeah. I kind of rushed through with him before he left, but. So they had to approve all these.
So what we need is two motions today, we need one to approve the homes debt tax credits, we need another one to approve the veterans' tax credits, and then we need a motion to approve the A land residential, two and full values, and to equalize this assessment for 2024. If you go on to the second page with the residential, we are in compliance at 91.9%. So you have to be within 90 to 100%, so we're in compliance with our residential. And he has a total valuations there on the last column. And then the next page is sales that he used, the good and used sales that he used for the residential to come up with this 91.9%. He had to go through and use some good sales, and he listed all the sales that he had used.
Well, just to be clear now, so that 91.9%, so if you take the full and true value of the county. Right?
For the residential.
Right, for the residential. And then we are basically using that 91.9% to come up with our bill.
That is mills, no. We're in compliance with our sales ratios, we're in compliance with the state, so.
Right, right, so take that back, I misspoke there. So we're valuing our properties at basically the bare minimum without the state intervening.
Right.
Yeah, so the next page, the list of sales, you know, they throw out any sales to family members, quickly needs all that, well, if you look, the two medians are highlighted.
Yeah.
So basically that's what the state looks at, they put it from high or low to high, and then the median.
They take the median too.
What they're selling for, first of all, we have to value that, and that's at, already at 9, over 90%.
You take the two and divide them two towards.
Yeah, to get the median.
Right, so the sales ratio is what things are selling for versus what we're valuing the amount, and we're at 91%.
Yep.
And then on the next page is the commercial, we're at 91.44%, and he also provided a list of the sales that he had used.
But if a house sells higher than, if it doesn't actually go up to what the house sells, does it?
Unless, if there was a bunch that sold higher than what it's worth.
Because I know there's several houses here that sold more than what they were appraised at.
Yeah, if there was a lot of those, then yes, you, that percentage, we'd be at like 80 something percent. But since there's a good mix of things that sold for less, and then also that's on more, we're kind of.
So it's, so we've, that dimension is low. So what happens if we weren't in compliance?
The state would make us do it, like last year, we weren't in compliance with our commercial, and then I went up to the state.
With the commercial, I could see, but residential, they do the same thing.
Same thing, yeah, yeah. The state would make us do it, a standardization, we can never.
They would just come down and reap rate everything out.
I only, I only want to bring that up because when the argument comes.
Vanguard?
Yeah.
So that's kind of a plus, isn't it?
Yep, yep.
The only reason I wanted to bring that up is because when the argument comes up about property taxes, and people always say it's a local issue and not a state issue, the argument I always make is, well, we operate almost at fair minimum, because if we wanted to go any less, the state forces us to go higher. So when, you know, like, I know like our legislators always kind of defend locals because they know how the state works, but when you get to some of the high roads, or even like during the governor's where you're sort of like, well, that's a local issue, that's not a state issue, I say, well, when the state tells you everything you have to do to run the whole process, how is there any local input in that part of the, like, we have this tiny window of input, and then we get this one playing for it, it's just kind of frustrating. So when the property tax debate comes up, we're at 91.9%, we have to be at 90, so we are, we're operating about as fair as we can without some of the intervening, and it's going to be worse, so. And the same looks like it's going for the commercial lot, the commercial one's still at 91.4?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the ag we're at 92%, but you guys said this at the March meeting.
That's the one I meant, like even with the mills and the couple, like we, the valuation we set in the spring for the land of ag land values is what plays, the residential stuff is more based on sales of ag land, we set that valuation.
Yeah. And then the last few pages is the notices of increases. So somebody had a value that increased by 10% and $3,000 from their prior year, they got sent a notice of increase, and they were asked to appear today if they didn't agree with that, so. There weren't too many sent out this year, so you could see last year, we had a lot more than there was this year, so.
Well, it looks to me like a lot of these are like, looks like some Rice Lake properties that got changed from ag land to rural residential because of the development. Some new homes that went from partially completed to probably mostly complete.
Yep.
Looks like a reclassified city lot from city owned exempt to taxable lot, which I'm assuming is because it's getting developed. I mean, it doesn't look to me like there was a lot of valuation changes unless it was like a total change to the property, more so than just like, like a lot of new home, new home, mobile home, so it went from like ag land to like a piece of property with a house on it, basically, so.
So we probably won't have anybody appearing today at all.
Sure.
That, that ag land, we're at 92%, but we did that slight increase in the spring to get to that point. So it was like, I think I increased it like 1.7% to keep it, to make sure we stayed over that 90. I think you guys approved 92 instead of 93%.
92, yeah.
Yeah, just to make sure we're slightly over that 90%, so.
Well, it seems to me that my experience, the value of the ag land always seems to be computing upwards, so if we don't at least go up 1% or 2%, I mean, we eventually get to the point where you have to raise it 5% or 7% or 10% to be able to start coming around with it.
Yeah.
That was another example that happened too, right? We've talked about that every once in a while, it was about 10 years ago? When the common commission didn't raise it, it fell down to like 88.2, and then the state came in, they don't just. But they don't just raise you to 90, they raise you to like 95%, so you don't have the same problem again next year, so it went up like 7% or 8% in one year, and then that caused.
A lot of head.
Well, because if you don't raise it to at least stay in the low 90s, then the state comes in and moves it on you, so you can't even say, well, we can make it on 88%, but it doesn't matter.
Too bad.
Well, the same with Marlis and Iowa, we went, we went to the state board equalization last year, pleaded with them, you know, because that whole issue we had where the, the commercial lots, the lake lots are considered.
Oh, yeah.
Commercial until they have like a house on them.
Yep.
And we were considered a residential, because some of them had power, some had water, they had a road, but as long as they don't have, they didn't fit the criteria to be residential, so they got put in a commercial, well, then that bumped that valuation down to like 87.
Well, it made it, we weren't to comply to the commercials, so.
Right.
We were having to raise all commercial values, businesses and everything. So we went up to the state arguing that point, you know, I said, it isn't fair to our businesses because of your guys' ruling that it has to be, that that lot is commercial. I mean, all our businesses' values were going to go up, but I, we didn't think that was right.
They even agreed with us, with the law said, with the law said, and they are not going, you know, they were like, yeah, I understand your point, I'm like, cool, and they're like, nothing we can do about it. Like, okay, they ended up, because we're just like, just give us a year, we're not asking you to leave us alone, just give us a year, because a lot of them lots were in the process to get developed, it's going to sort itself out here, so then they forced us to raise evaluations of the commercial lots. So there was this scenario where even, we were even trying to just keep, we're like, we, now our budget's done, we already figured it out, we don't need that increase, and they're like, doesn't matter, it's state law. And that was the state auditor, the state ag commissioner, state treasurer, the town governor, and the tax commissioner, so I mean, it was all like.
All the big ones.
And they knew, I mean, they came in, they were like, yeah, no, you make perfect sense, but laws are on, so. It was still cool to go, I guess. Asked them if we could put tents on if that counted, and then they laughed, but I don't think they agreed with that. It'd be cheaper to buy tents than to raise the taxes on it, but they wouldn't let us do it.
Wouldn't let you do it.
Nope. So I was just trying to make a point of that, because, you know, the counties get a lot of blame for things like property taxes, and you go, oh, there was this scenario where they literally just made us do something that we didn't even want to do, so.
We're starting to get a bit more.
Well, I mean, unless you make changes to those state laws, you're going to have issues like the, like the current ballot measure where people are, you know, tired of things going the way they're going, they're going to try and change it, so if those state guys don't wake up with some of that stuff, you know, and.
So what we need from you is a motion to approve the ag residential, commercial, two and full values, and to equalize for assessment for 2024, and also a motion to approve the homes debt and the veterans' credits.
Right, but we want to make it at least 9:45, don't we?
If you want, yeah.
Well, I mean, just to be fair, because you got it on.
There's somebody to come in.
Right, if somebody comes in at the end, we don't want to make motions before that, so.
Okay.
Organized is at 9:45, so I would say if nobody's in here by at least 9:45, 9:50, I would probably make a motion, so. I think unless we are, have any other things to talk about with it, we'll just leave those time slots open, and we'll just move on with the agenda, and then, and then that way, I mean, if somebody wants to come in and have an issue with their assessments, we can deal with it, but we should at least allow that time before we make a motion, so. I guess what we could do is try the miscellaneous, that's probably something that we don't need somebody here for, so. We'll move on to the renewal of a building permit for Verizon Wireless to exchange six antennas and add three antennas.
Want to take copies?
To exchange ancillary tower.
Do you really want to take copies?
Tower height width remains the same, no ground work, so it's just antennas on the tower. Location is the south half of the south half, less 4.428 acres. Parcel number 10 and parcel number 11, section 32, township 131, range 78. Josh, where in the heck is that?
It's by Arlen, Burgad, actually.
Okay. I kind of had an idea where all these towers were, but that was a.
One by Hazelton?
No, no, straight west of Strasburg.
All west of Arlen.
Or east of Cattail Bay, basically. Someone's right next to Harlan, too. Yeah, it seems to be pretty common stuff, they're updating more antennas and stuff like that, so. Doesn't look like any changes to height, width, no ground work.
No location change.
Just all antenna work, so. I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve table or deny.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner, Commissioner Maiteri makes a motion to approve the renewal building permit for Verizon Wireless to exchange antennas. Second by Commissioner Miller, is there any more discussion? Building permit for Verizon Wireless? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye, but I oppose. Permit approved. Next will be a liquor license for Quencher Bar for a special event, held on June 29th, 2024, and June 30th, 2024, at the Beaver Horse Grounds located in Portion, Southwest Quarter, section 36.
I'm going to call, are you up here and ask?
Range 76. Yeah, you might as well just make sure, I'm assuming it's just Quencher doing it for the rodeo, but we want to make sure.
Is that yours once the mold is?
Well, that's the right way to do it, and it looks like they're doing it on August 17th, which I'm assuming is the ranch rodeo thing they do at the same time, so. We should probably wait for Gary to just make sure that there's no issues with Quencher Bar and.
Quencher Bar is a bar.
Yep. I assume it's.
You want to wait till Gary, just make a motion?
Yes, no, I would say we'll just push on the side until Gary comes up, just to confirm that there's.
Come, the phone does work.
We didn't get the tower fixed yet.
Uh, it's not plugged, yeah. The cords, I mean.
Joe, do you want to tell Gary Sanders to come up here? Thank you.
He should probably specify so he doesn't come in here with a shield and a nightstick. The way he made it sound like, tell Gary Sanders to get up here, he should probably be like, you have a question?
If it be 8:58, unless it seem to be pushing the panic button.
I'm going to sign that.
No, I got to correct.
Okay.
So you'll have to come in sometime.
That's fine.
Just don't worry.
Are those gaming site authorization applications here too?
Yeah, I was just, I wonder why is the price different? I know this one has 7.5, but I don't figure 5. One is 100, one is 300, I wonder what that, would that be, Gary?
Sheriff Sanders?
Yes.
I guess the, the main thing is that we have liquor license applications for the Quencher to do, looks like the regular rodeo, the ranch rodeo.
On this one, I kind of can't make a.
Discussing with liquor licenses, making sure that everything's.
No, I got no objection, there's no concern that we're tied down there doing that.
So.
Quencher's fine.
Do you have anything to do with the gaming site authorizations for the, I'm guessing pull tab machines for the legion or anything? Okay.
I'll have Brad come up here, he's still in gear.
Okay, that's fine, well, Sheriff Sanders says he's got no issue with the Quencher doing anything, and then.
Okay, can you send Brad Huber up here now?
So I'll make a motion to.
Well, hang on a second here, so we got ones from the Quencher, but then we also have a.
Two from the Quencher, two different dates.
But we got liquor license for Our Place by the Bay, and that's not, that's not on.
This is a gaming.
Right, there's another, Colby Schultz with Our Place by the Bay for a liquor license, and I'm assuming some kind of.
Yep, that's not on the agenda, we'll have to put it on there.
I think, is it for the 25th of June?
21st of June?
21st, if you've got some type of event outside.
Okay, no issue with the.
No, not this.
Okay. Well, it wasn't on this part of the agenda, I assumed it was the Quencher, but the Quencher's got two of them on the same one, so.
Yeah, I'm about to add it on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just made sure, so. Okay, well, I guess, I want to entertain a motion to approve table or deny the Quencher Bar's license request for Beaver Horse Grounds on August 17th. for Beaver Horse Grounds on August 17th and on June 29th and 30th.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Commissioner Materia makes a motion, motion to approve both liquor licenses for the Quencher. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Any more discussion on liquor licenses for the Quencher Bar for the rodeo grounds? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Permit approved. Liquor license approved, so. Okay. Next item will be, um, the gaming site authorizations for Joseph E. Atford American Legion Post 126 at Cattail Resort in Our Place by the Bay. Commissioner Holmes, have a question?
Yeah, I got a question. How come on one it's 300 and you're one of them is 100?
This is what we agreed with the bar owners. That's what we agreed with the individual bar owners for rent, for those, those items.
So the price, it can always be different from everybody?
It can't be more than 400 is the only stipulation.
Well, how can there's in the set price?
That's just.
Just the way.
That's how the state has it. The state has it set where $400 max is set. We, we technically, if we agreed not to pay them at all, we would. It's, it's what we work out with the bar owners. And the E tab machines is 175 for the first five machines and $75 for each additional machine. Now, that's their standard, but you can't pay them more than $1,250 a month is all the state has for stipulation. And then what we work out with the bar owners is as long as it's not over that.
So they could all come and just say, we're only gonna pay a hundred dollars?
They could, yes. Or the organizations could say.
We're not gonna.
The state sets the maximum.
Right, it's the maximum.
And then the locals can negotiate that with the bar.
Yeah, that's why, because, because each, well, that's what I'm getting at is that they want jars, whatever, and this other bar, but one bar is paying more because he agreed to a lesser, you know, to me, it should be a same set price.
Well, it'd be equal to everybody. I know for the liquor lines law, we look at that too and, and a lot of that has to do with how much business is going through those machines.
Yeah.
How many machines do you have?
Right.
One bar might have one machine. Or the bar might have six.
And that's where, you know, on the bottom one, they, they do that. They got seven, they got 500 and they got five for, you know, so it is different there. It's just the top one I thought, you know.
In, in addition to that, um, based off of usage, um, the rent for the Our Place is lower. We negotiated lower because of the numbers they produce as far as gaming funds. And then the pull, or the paper tab is more or less an additional. We'll see how it goes this year. And so we just set it at 100 for them.
Which is fine, I'm just saying, you know, some bars say, hey, he's paying more, you know, that's the only thing I was getting at.
But like you say, it changed on volume going through too.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of that too.
Okay.
No other questions or concerns with gaming site authorization? Yes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve either each individually or both of them.
I'll make a motion to approve both of them.
Commissioner Materia?
And Sean.
Makes a motion to approve both gaming site authorizations. Is there a second motion?
How second?
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Is there any more discussion on gaming set authorization? Request? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Authorization approved. Christie, I've got, are you here for equalization or are you here for the road setting? Okay, I kind of figured, but I, should I ask something? Today is the third, right?
Nope.
All right.
Commissioner Magr, if I can address the commission just briefly?
Sure.
If you got a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just gonna let the commission know that I've got a meeting tonight with the city council of Lytton here and I'm intentioned tonight or to let them know that I will not be renewing the law enforcement contract with the city of Lytton going forward. Uh, we've had a five-year freeze in that contract for the cost of it. And it's become, you know, basically, I've gotten to the point where I don't think it's in the best interest of the county and the best in the city that we just do away with the contract. We're not gonna be going forward. When that contract ends at the end of 2024, we won't be renewing that at that time, so.
On a five year or not at all?
It's been locked in for the last five years. And now we're at the budget cycle for the city and for the county. So we want to make sure that the city has, you know, they can discuss what they're gonna do going forward.
Okay.
And so forth, so.
And to be clear on that, the sheriff's department is still gonna be doing all the criminal matters and legal matters. It's more so the city ordinances and things like that.
We still, we still will handle any criminal matter, uh, state traffic law issues. We just won't be dealing with the city ordinance issues in town.
So there's still police in Lincoln?
Right, yeah.
It's just, it's not gonna be for dog vaccinations and, and fentanyl issues, it's gonna be for, you know, drugs and speeding.
The rest of the city's in the county and the state.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, one of the things that that contract provided was a increased presence in town. Um, I think that's lost in the shuffle that, uh, some, some thought that it was just strictly enforcement of ordinances. That wasn't it. We guarantee them 40-plus hours of presence in the community. Um, what we're gonna see probably going forward is probably less of a presence in the community of Lytton and more of a presence in the county. Um, you've got, you know, two subdivisions out in the county that's all under jur, or county jurisdiction at Cattail Bay and Beaver Bay that if, on the weekends, it's, they're small communities out there.
Yeah.
Uh, and we need to have more of a presence out there too, so.
Okay.
What's the report from the Johnny Home concert? Was that a pretty piece?
Good, well behaved. Um, I think they had a pretty good crowd.
Okay.
I was out there briefly for a while and, um, no, it went well. It went well, it was well behaved. It's changed. It took a lot of years to get us to that point from what the old days used to be, but, uh, no, it was well behaved. I think and well attended. I think they were happy with the attendance and talked to the guys afterwards. I mean, it was, it was well, it just went well.
Good.
Haven't been to Johnny Home since the turn 21.
Right.
There's no more adventure. Anyway. Okay, good to hear. So, uh, I guess with that, back on some topics here quick. The liquor license for Our Place by the Bay for June 21st, which I'm assuming is like an outdoor event thing that they're gonna be doing, which is pretty common, so. Motion to approve table or deny the liquor license for Our Place by the Bay?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Materia to approve?
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Any more discussion on the liquor license for Our Place by the Bay for June 21st, 2024? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Permit approved. And we've still got a few minutes here, so we can probably do the.
Is that building permit?
Building permit for Michael and Cheryl Schneider to add a 12 by 10 pergola on section 23, township 132, range 46.
So this is, um, the overhead view. This is before they did that addition last year. We, you guys approved that addition for them, the variance right here. They want to put a pergola gazebo thing down under the shade of this tree. Hold the picture. Kind of like that, however, the property line on the north is right there. This existed, or here's the addition you guys approved. Uh, this slab was there. They want to extend this slab 12 by 15 feet and then add this gazebo thing, the four posts bolted to it. So the setback was 15 feet. But I just state the facts and I guess you guys can discuss it. They got a really, they got the smallest lot out there, but. It's gonna be about right here. It's gonna be a couple of feet from the.
Yeah, and it is, I've seen that earlier. It's a small.
Is it?
Yeah. It's small.
So they're kind of restricted to what they can do?
There's nowhere else.
Is that considered?
It's neat, or it can be neat. The, the place is neat.
Is that considered a temporary structure or would that be, uh?
Our ordinance is very vague on what it just says setback. So we set back everything, I guess, 15 feet. It doesn't specifically break it down into temporary permanent.
Even that concrete would be.
That concrete, yeah.
Yeah.
And it sounds like they're gonna, whether they put anchors, they're gonna bolt it and down to it. They're not gonna, it sound like they weren't gonna concrete. Then they're gonna just anchor it and bolt it out or something, but.
Well, I don't, I don't have an issue with it morally, but I noticed that my experience with this lot, we, we agreed to grant them a variance on that addition because there was a structure there. And there was already a foundation there and so allowing them to build on that really wasn't that big of a deal. But now this is kind of a whole new thing now and I just, we kind of keep running into this trap where we have new stuff that always wants to be impeding on these setbacks all the time and it just seems like it's getting worse and worse and worse because we kind of keep tolerating it. And that's, that's the thing. I mean, we either have setbacks and ordinances or we don't. Because if we're just gonna grant the variance for every request, then we really don't have an ordinance. And so that's kind of just where I stand on it. I mean, it's one thing to allow, there's a building there 50 some years and they went and tore it off and updated the building there. I don't really have a problem with that, but.
If you went 15 feet farther to the right, where would it sit?
Right.
Well, next thing.
Okay, so 15 feet from the line is the end of this, because this concrete is 15 feet right here, so yeah, it'd be.
Well, with that tree.
Yeah. There's like a shit way of it. Away that this new addition is about 15 feet from.
Yeah, he could set it right in that, yeah.
I'm thinking they want to keep that tree for shape.
Right, but I, I guess I will just, I'll be the jerk again, but you know, the, the, the idea of allowing a variance because you don't want to cut down the tree, it's not the reason for the ordinance existing. That's the trouble. That's, you know, Aaron Magr walking out there and looking at that says, yeah, that's not a problem. As a commissioner, I'm duty bound to follow the ordinances as close as we can. Can we grant a variant? I have no doubt in my mind, but if we're granting one or two variances every meeting because somebody doesn't want to cut down a tree or somebody doesn't want to move around a spot or doesn't want to move their road, like, that, that's in my mind, not really a good excuse. I, I just, I just, um, that's where I struggle with this stuff and.
I'm wondering if they could move it to this side of that tree and up towards our house a little bit.
Yeah, you know, again, I, I know, just, I just to kind of, again, let's not sound like a jerk, but all our job is to tell them where they can't put it. They can put it wherever they want, just as long as they can put it up and take deals. I granted a variance to allow that addition. I feel like we accommodated enough for that small lot. The truth of the matter is that some of these issues are coming up because some of these lots really aren't made to be developed the way people want to develop them. And to grant variances for them throws out the ordinance book, because the whole point of me even arguing why we have one acre restrictions and stuff now is because of scenarios like this, you get a lot too small. Yeah, we want to do this and that. I totally agree, doing that would be great for that lot, but it's not big enough for it. That's the problem. That's, it, you're gonna have a property that's completely full from boundary line to boundary line and then the next neighbor now doesn't have the room to do what they want to do, even if they abide by the setback. That's, that's kind of the problem with all of it and we're. We're running into a scenario where we're granting variances because we don't want to be the bad guys. But the whole point of the ordinance is, is so we don't have bad guys. We follow the rules and we build where the need get built. If there's a total way that can't be done and we can see around it, that's what the variance process is there for. It's not there to just, because we don't want to have a conflict, so. However, you guys want to handle it, it's fine, but I, I don't think a new structure like that should probably get approved just because if this sets a bad precedent where now it's all, it's the only place we can put it. Now we're granting variances for everything, so.
Yeah, it'd be a different story if there wasn't no place at all, but he actually can move it over.
And two, the road's right behind me and that's, that slab would be exactly 40 feet away, which is the amount for the front setback. Okay. So if he meets that, it's just that side.
You're certain that that's the setback, 15 feet out of that property line?
No, that's. They don't have, it would be 10 if they had both public water and public sewer.
Right.
Both, but since they don't, 15 on the side.
Right. Well, entertain a motion to approve table or deny a building permit for Michael and Cheryl Schneider. Michael Schneider and Cheryl Dinkin.
I'll make a motion to deny it.
Commissioner Holmes makes a motion to deny it. Is there a second to that motion? Yes. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion? Deny of the building permit for Michael Schneider and Cheryl Dinkin? Any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Permit is denied. The reason for the permit being denied is the issue with setbacks, so. So that can be accommodated or changed, we can revisit the subject, so. We're down at 9:50, so it doesn't seem that anybody has come in for assessment equalization, so. With that, you're looking for, again, a motion to approve the residential values, the commercial values, the A values and the veterans and, uh.
Homestead credit.
Homestead credit. So I guess first we'll entertain a motion to approve the residential assessed values.
I'll make a motion to approve the residential.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the residential valuations for Amens County. Is there any more discussion on that? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Residential values approved. Need a motion to approve the commercial values.
Make a motion to approve the commercial values?
Commissioner Miller makes a motion to approve the commercial valuations. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Materia. Is there any more discussion on the Amens County commercial valuations? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Commercial values approved. Next would be a motion to approve the ag land valuations. Is there a motion to approve the ag land evaluation?
I'll make a motion to approve the ag land.
Commissioner Miller makes a motion to approve the ag land evaluation. Is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ag land values approved. Last motion would be a motion to approve the veteran credits and the homestead credits.
I'll make a motion to approve the credit.
Commissioner Holmes makes a motion to approve the veterans and homestead credits for Amens County for year 2024. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Materia. Is there any more discussion? On the veteran and homestead credits? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Veterans and homestead credits are approved. Is that it?
Yeah, I have another question though.
Okay.
I have the deadline for applications, I think, the fourteenth. We want two commissioners to interview candidates. For tax director.
Well, last time I did, I think it was Commissioner Hall and me and Ardella Dice. Because Ardella kind of has the most experience out of anybody in that field, so. Say Commissioner Mataris and Commissioner Miller. Take their turns interviewing this group.
You want to do, you want the seasoned guys to do it?
The seasoned guys. Commissioner Hall and I hired somebody. Didn't last long, maybe we're not the best ones for it, so. I'd say if you do want to take your turn. Art, Art Jack, right? So, no offense to Wayne, that was a joke. Wayne's fine, is what it is, but I'd say just to be fair with it, I'd say, and I'm, I'm speak for Ardella, but I'd be assuming she'd probably be one of them.
I think she would.
We can certainly ask her. She brings a lot of knowledge just to the interview process, so.
Could you sit in also?
If you want.
If you want.
You want to sit in too?
I may know someone that's related to me that might apply, so I might not.
What day was that? I'm still not late.
Well, I don't have a.
The deadlines are.
The deadline for applications is the fourteenth.
So said interviews somewhere within hopefully a week of that-ish maybe or something? June fourteenth?
Yeah.
So probably around June twentieth-ish.
I would say try and give them here.
You'd probably want to do interviews the week of the seventeenth through the twenty, twenty-first.
Yeah, probably through the ten.
Would be the best case scenario if everybody can comply to that.
Be a good experience for the two of you.
Yeah, we don't want to have too much. It's very scary. So.
You did.
Okay. So Commissioner Mataris and Commissioner Miller will participate on the.
Thank you.
Great honor. Thank you for taking. All right. With that, we can take Craig yet? If you're ready to go.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Morning commissioners, how's everyone doing today?
Good.
Excellent, Craig. Thanks for coming in.
Hey, not a problem. Thanks for letting me come in. So what I got for you for right now is this is a quote from Twin City Roofing for after our wonderful remodel that just started today downstairs off the auditorium. Looking at making sure we've got a new roof to put over all the wonderful work that we're having done. And I'm scheduling this for the year of 2025. And so what we're looking at is doing all three sections of roof that's back there in the auditorium. So this way everything is covered and it will be taken care of. And it's that grand total amount that comes out to about eighty-five thousand and some change for doing all three sections because that's where all the majority of the work is being done. Excuse me. And so the other sheet of paper that I have with you for that one is, that was the last rough section that we did. And the original proposal for that one came out to thirty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-five. And we ended up running over a bit by just not knowing what was it, how everything was wobbling and what have you till afterward. So I'm kind of asking maybe if we could do maybe five to ten thousand dollars more on top of that eighty-five thousand just to make sure we have enough coverage for overages.
Is that a flat roof?
Yeah.
So another issue is done, taken care of yet then? I mean, before?
No, no, this is.
That's all the other stuff, okay.
Right, yeah, this, this will be completely separate from all the work that is going on downstairs. So this is, I'm trying to set this up for year of 2025. Because the other thing is, I've been talking with Twin City Roofing on that one is that the reason why I'm coming to you now is that anything after July will have anywhere between a ten and fifteen percent increase on inflation costs. So it's kind of one of the things, if I can lock it in in June, we can lock this price in for this year. And so we'll be prepared for next year for that price to be locked in on it.
So even in the budgeting scenario, we can budget for next year, but we just need to know if we want to lock in something for now.
Right, correct.
So where's this back entry, where, where does that?
That's that entryway that comes up, the auditorium kitchen that goes to where the generator is and where the air conditioning unit is at to get to where the garbage can is.
How often do we address this with tar?
Uh, it's, it's, it's a rubber membrane, membrane roof. And so it's, that's one of them things where I will not be touching any repairs on that one. And that's where you get hold of Twin City if you have a leak or something like that.
What would it cost to throw a rafter on that and put a pitch to that roof?
But we, we have, we have some utility stuff up there, right? Like air conditioning units and things like that, so that's.
Correct, yeah.
Part of the issue with it being a flat roof also is, and even some of the new stuff for the new auditorium project is going on the roof, right?
There is nothing going on the roof itself. It's just one of them things where I want a new roof put over that section because since we're having all this work done, I'd like a new roof to be put over that. So this way we are protected because we are at a warranty on that section of the roof too.
Right, but don't we, we have condensers and things like that on the roof, don't we?
No, there, there's nothing on the roof. The only thing that's on that roof section is an air vent to turn the fan on to exhaust. Exhaust air. Right.
So it's a flat roof just by design and there's no?
There, it's, the auditorium itself does have a slight pitch to it. It's not much, but there is a little bit of a pitch to it. But the other two sections, that stair, stairwell that's up by the auditorium kitchen, that is a pitch, but it's one of them things where I've got water leaking in somewhere. And there's a drain pipe that's going through that I'm assuming is cracked. And that's leaking water into that back entrance that's ruining the sheetrock that we have in there. So it's kind of one of them things where it needs to be addressed to begin with anyways. And then the other section is that entryway, that vestibule coming in with the double doors are at. So if we're there, we might as well get that roof taken care of as well because I know that warranty on that section of the roof is out as well.
One way to do in the roof is phases.
Correct.
So I mean, this is probably one of the last phases or not the last?
There should be, after this one, there would be probably two more.
Okay.
Yeah, because there would be one right above our heads above the courtroom here. And this one isn't that bad yet. And then would be the section over the human services zone. And I just don't remember exactly where the timelines on those kind of run into play on which one either. Who's gonna take precedence over each one?
Well, the whole roof is just last.
Right, there's no, I mean, there's a slight pitch obviously, but it's considered a flat roof.
Correct.
I don't know, I mean, that's one question that could be, of course, the only thing that comes to mind right away is like the historical value if you can.
I don't, it's one of those things where I don't think.
Register and all that, I don't know. But I mean, I don't know if we've ever looked at actually trying to slope the roof, which, like I said, my assumption was there was at least a couple pieces of utility structure up there, something, you know, but there's no.
The only one, only one where there is something like that is the air conditioning unit that's right above us on this roof. After that, there's your exhaust vents that's over on the south section that's down here. Otherwise, you just have your standard, you know, your, uh, for your air ducts for your plumbing and that kind of stuff.
Just vent work basically, which could get extended through a slope roof, so.
Right.
Even air conditioning, they could set it with a rail.
Right, I just, I kind of assumed there was a couple of answers or something up there because otherwise, I, I agree with you, flat roofs are, like all the schools and things that they get flat roofs are always a problem.
It's the tar companies who.
Yeah. Um, so I guess the main issue now is you're just looking for approval to lock into a price.
Correct.
Because it's something that, I mean, I can tell you one thing, if you don't fix the roof, there's no point in fixing the rest of it. So I would say I have no problem with you locking in a price, something that we can budget for next year and, you know.
If we lock this price in and got prices on trusses and decide to go with the trusses, would we have to pay anything to them for locking that price in or not?
This would be something I would have to give Rich a call about because then I'm sure that would probably know in play because then we would be entering a contract. And I'm sure Joe can speak of this as well. That's where you're gonna be entering a contract and we go and change our minds. We're gonna be probably in some legal issues over that if we're signing, signing up a contract.
I'd like to know what a trust group would cost.
Well, we also have to look into if we, if, if we even aren't allowed to do something like that with historic valuation of the courthouse, with it being on the registry. We have to get approval for doing that. And my guess would probably be more likely no, but we can always look into it and find off for sure.
Because that's a nightmare, these flat roofs.
Oh, yes.
But like you said, like Aaron said, you gotta do something on that roof.
Well, I just know my experience, if you don't have a roof, you don't have a building. It doesn't matter, you can, I literally tore a barn down in my place because they quit fixing the roof. The rest of the building wasn't that bad a shape and once the roof went, everything else went. So roof is kind of paranoid, so. I guess, um, I entertain a motion to allow Craig to enter into agreement with Twin City Roofing for the auditorium roof, the south entry roof and the back entry roof. For the, um.
You said the price was about?
Eighty-five thousand three hundred and forty-seven.
Probably plan for a little bit of overage, like you said, just, I mean, just twenty-one, two fifty-nine, I mean. So the auditorium roof is fifty-one thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars. The south entry roof would be twenty-one thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars. And the back entry roof would be twelve thousand four hundred nineteen. For grand total, eighty-five thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars.
Three hundred forty-seven?
Yep, forty-seven. So I would say just probably as a measure of safety, it's probably approved ninety thousand dollars. You could go up to a thousand on an agreement with them.
Well, it's just, it's one of them things where you're not gonna know until you dig into it on what's supposed to be replaced by insulation, something, that kind of stuff. So I'm just kind of figuring, going off of our, our last one that we had, just figuring in anywhere between five and ten thousand more just to make sure that we're covered for, for, just for overages.
Well, I would say ninety thousand would be just a good round number and that gives us something to budget for for next year and then, you know, we'll figure it from there, so.
That's kind of where my thoughts were with that one too.
Guess I'll entertain a motion to, guess approve table or deny the request for Craig Kitz in the interior agreement with Twin City Roofing. Any amount of ninety thousand dollars for roof repairs and quarrels?
Well, my question is, okay, if we approved this and we would decide that it was, that we could rebuild the roof, how would that go?
Not very good.
Well, the only.
We have, we have till the end of June to lock in this price because it'll be as of July first, then the price is gonna go up anywhere between ten and fifteen percent. So we have a little bit of time, but it's one of them things where when you hit July first, we are going to be looking at a price increase on materials.
Who's on that, well, like Sanders, have you run that committee, are you not, with Comstock? Where would that fall in as far as historical? And would they know that? By running that through them? I don't know, I would think they would.
Well, I would think the historical side probably comes from, you know, ship or the.
Yeah.
The historical presentation officer. So, you know, that would probably be a better question for them than as far as.
Well, I'm sure it's expensive as can be to redo that.
Well, that's, I mean, I, I guess just my own two cents on this is at ninety thousand dollars, I think you'd have a tough time trusting that roof. We also don't know about a timeline. And so even if you did this roof and you decided you wanted to trust it later, you know, I think there'd still be some value in having a sealed roof until you get to that point. And then even if you do trust over the top of it, you have another layer of protection. Like I, that's just kind of a thought process of mine because I don't know if you'd be able to even get something like that done very soon, just.
I don't know.
I mean, just in general, if you're thinking about a timeline on a project, you're probably talking, I would say at least two or three years, so that would probably get done. Are you willing to, you know, risk the roof leaking for that long if that's the case, if you have issues? I mean.
No.
I don't disagree with one slope roof, I don't disagree with that at all, but I feel like at the same time, it's, that's still maybe a long-term project and I don't know if spending the money on fixing this roof in the meantime would be considered like a waste. Plus, there's also, these roofs are a little bit different levels, right?
Yes.
And so you also have the scenario where you don't even know if you'd be able to slope all the roof. Like some of this roof, you might be patching and you might only be able to trust part of the roof or so. Without knowing all those details, it'd be pretty hard to put this on hold for a maybe because if we lose out and then we have to pay an additional ten to fifteen percent on top of this for something that we're probably gonna end up doing already.
And could, and could potentially get pushed off another year on top of it.
Yeah, and I guess if I was gonna say, if you were gonna have any kind of a violation of the contract, it's not like you're gonna owe him all this money, you probably owe him a small portion. You could almost buy yourself out of the contract if you decided you wanted to slope it. Yeah, you're out that, but it's probably the same amount as your ten percent increase. So either way, you're probably looking at losing ten thousand dollars if you want.
You probably can't even slope it.
I.
Is this a high wizard up there, is it flat, flat?
Well, it's, it's flat, then you got about, well, it's, it's flat, then you got about a two or three foot, give or take, or a foot in some spots for the parapet or the, the top of the, the edge of the building you said because it actually does drop down.
One big.
Well, I think, that's the same thing, chemilipic, they have several buildings and if you want to build door, you gotta build the whole thing.
I, I, I'm not, I'm definitely not a roofing expert, but I would have to say that it'd probably be a challenging project, even if you got approval to do it. And if you did it, who would do it? When would that happen? How much would that cost? In the meantime, I mean, spending this kind of money to protect the roof. I mean, I don't think it'd be a waste even if you did it and ended up sloping the roof later.
The engineer would probably take six months to figure it out too.
Well, it's, it'd be a project because it's, I don't think it'd be a very simple roof the way even we're roofing it in separate phases because it's just not a simple project. There's additions, everything's at a different height. Even to try and blend a sloped roof, I don't even know how you'd do it. So it would be, it'd be a project that's maybe worth discussing, but I don't know if it's even gonna get done in a timeline, I would still protect the roof, so.
But it's probably not feasible. I don't know.
I don't know, I don't.
That's the other thing.
I think if push came to shove and he didn't want to do it because he wanted to do another project, I think the ability to get out of that contract would probably be, man, it's not like we owe him ninety thousand dollars. I highly doubt that, but I would say if anything, we could just give credit, credit the approval to negotiate that. And if there was something weird or something, I guess you could report back to any one of us and ask them. I mean, if they're just like, oh yeah, if we violate the contract or we break the contract, it's ten percent of the adjusted cost or something, it's nine thousand bucks. Well, if you're gonna do a couple hundred thousand dollar project, yeah, I would venture it's gonna cost that much. It's gonna be expensive, so.
Is there brand money on historical structure, like for something like back to preserve it?
There probably is some stuff, but I don't know.
When that comes up, I wouldn't be able to, because I don't want to opt anything like that.
Yeah, married, you say?
Usually not for maintenance.
Pardon?
Usually not for maintenance. Usually maintenance isn't.
You'd be talking about maybe like then solve, solve the roof on it or something?
Yeah.
We could definitely use and check it into it and, you know, see if there's some kind of availability for that.
Well, for now, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, to go forward with this contract, yeah.
Commissioner Hall makes a motion to, uh, grant approval for Craig Kitz and enter into a contract with Twin City Roofing for the value of ninety thousand dollars for roof improvements to the courthouse. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mataris, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Roof repairs. You can enter into agreement with them if you feel.
Okay, thank you. And like I say, I will do some tracking into that stuff before I will turn this contract over to Twin City. Like I say, I have till the end of the month to, for that price on this to be a lot then, so. Thank you commissioners.
Okay. I'm gonna excuse myself just for a couple seconds. You want to bring us that amendment, you'll have to.
They want to move it like north from south, is that right, what I see?
No, it's right here, right now, going through the lots.
Yeah.
They want to move it north.
North.
So they have their whole lot to work with.
Okay.
You know, because it's cutting off six, six feet of the northern part of all those lots there.
Yeah.
Okay, I wonder where utility went through them. But it would be on their private, it would be on their private land then, I guess. Or is that be their property?
So another thing that Dan Carr had mentioned to me, if you want to go back to the satellite, huge, uh, there's kind of a water drainage there on the south side of the main entrance. Right there, kind of, you wanna zoom into that?
Yeah.
So apparently, there's a pretty good sized culvert or two and that is in the section line. And it needs some riprap because it's, uh, on the waterside, starting to kind of wash it a little bit. Yeah, it's pushing back from the lake on the waterside. It sounds like the water's kind of down now, so looking to be too big of a project. And Dan was asking me if the, if the county would riprap around that culvert. I haven't looked at it and I think that's what, probably what Commissioner Reddell is gonna look at is, when Dan asked me to come look at it, I said, well, I should call Donnie since he's so close at least. And then, you know, we can discuss it at the meeting when Donnie was here today, so. But it didn't sound like he looked at it anyway, but. The, the question was, was that Dan was gonna have at least one contractor down there, if not two, doing some work and it sounds like there's a rock pile like literally right next to it. And his, his thoughts were it was just maybe the county just wanted to have, like if we agreed we were gonna do it, you know, rather than have the road department do it, if, you know, maybe Skylar would just go kind of oversee it beginning and see it at the end and then one of their contractors could, because they're gonna have somebody there moving the road and they're gonna have skid motors, excavators, everything there. And I thought, well, you know, in theory, I haven't looked at the project, but it would make sense to maybe consider that option if somebody's over there just, you know, depending on if somebody would want to give us kind of just a rough estimate of what it would cost. As long as it's not too egregious, they would probably get it done in a timely manner, right down there with everything else, so.
So what are they gonna do? Are they gonna take a scraper, take all this gravel? Did we place the gravel?
No, we didn't do, I mean, the, the section line road gets some maintenance, I think, some maintenance, I think, but I mean, it maybe gets bladed a little bit here and there. But once it goes and deviates up on Dan's, that's all.
It was barely.
Yep, he built that entire road as soon as it comes off the section line there, so that all, so, and he's moving all of it himself. He's not asking for anything other than a little riprap on that big culvert, which I haven't looked at, so. But just a little bit of discussion I had with him, I said, oh, it seems reasonable to at least, you know, consider just having somebody do it while they're there. Maybe they could do it for a pretty reasonable price, get it done right away while they're doing everything else and stuff, so. But I told him, so yeah, if you or Don or anybody, I don't think it has to get decided today, but just, you know, this, because I don't think he's even having a contractor come. I think he's ready to get in time, but it sounds like he won't be for a little bit, so. It's probably something we can make a decision on the next meeting or two or something. But we should just look at it and see if it's not a big project. Same with you, Skylar, if you're down in that area, just look at that culvert. It's not a big project and it's something somebody else can handle, maybe just have them do it.
Yeah.
I guess in my mind, that's one way to just get something done without always stretching our nice stuff in. So that was another part of private, Donnie was talking about earlier, wanting to look at something that's Dan had mentioned a few too, so. As far as the plat, I really don't have any concerns with him basically amending the plat, moving that road. He's not asking anything of the county and I told Dan that that's all just on his own as far as whatever he wants to do. But he's in total agreement. He doesn't just, you know, argue that at all. So. And it looks to me that there's signatures on, I believe, all the lot owners here, so. I don't know if anybody that'd be in dispute of it, if they are in dispute of it, courts are at their disposal, I just want something like that, I guess. I don't know. As far as the plat goes, I don't see any issues. Does Josh have any issues that you?
No, there's no problems.
There isn't any, is there?
No, it's all on his land.
So is this, did they submit an actual plat though, too?
I haven't seen this original one, so.
Okay, because I mean, that's where, I don't know, are they asking us to just approve this?
I didn't see this till Thursday, so I don't know if there's an original one that Kathy has or not.
I think they just want the plan kind of approved, that they can build in the new spot before or they file that paperwork because they didn't know if they're gonna need to have any more here.
Well, I would say I would need a plat to approve before I would approve the plat. But as far as the idea of it, I don't see an issue, so.
I think that's what's holding a lot of them up for building this structure down there. It's too tight in the water.
Yeah, right, right.
The road is actually pitting them in, but they can't build far enough from the water, so. So yeah, no, it all makes sense. It's a pretty common sense move. So I haven't seen any issue with it, but I would like to see an official plat before I would, you know, actually approve anything. But just verbally and say they can move forward. I don't see an issue with it, so.
So should I reach out? Because their surveyor had emailed me this paperwork. I can reach out to him and tell him that you guys approved the plan to move the road and if they submit another plat, it'll get approved at this design.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see a problem with that.
And that should automatically vacate the previous existing access route, so.
I think the big issue is their concern about vacating the, the road and if there was an issue we had with that, which if they're, as long as they're moving the road and not eliminating it, I don't see an issue at all, so. And like I said, those signatures here on these easements, it looks like you basically have assigned easements and every one of them is land over, so I'm assuming they're all in favor of it, so. Okay, yeah, I would say during the conversation with them, just tell them we have to see an official plat to truly approve it. But if that's the plan they're gonna follow, I don't, unless anybody else.
It's gonna be a fight to do, yeah.
Anybody else has any hesitations about it? Speak now, I guess.
Well, it's kind of they get this straightened out now and after the alleys are developed, so.
Well, I don't think they can, like Dan said, I don't think they really can develop the road the way it is. It's kind of, they're kinda happy to do it, so it makes sense.
Because nothing's happening on that north side.
Right.
South side's being developed another right there.
Yeah. Okay. So with that, the only other thing on the agenda will be Skylar Perelwitz of the Road Department.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Did we wanna talk about the, I know on the previous agenda, there was some talk about the city project, that agreements with the roads. And then it got taken off because the mayor couldn't be here, I guess.
Yeah, we had discussed it. I had visited with the mayor and he said, are you planning on going to the city meeting today, tonight?
Uh, no, I guess I never.
Never? Okay.
Never heard about it or anything, like.
He just mentioned to me that he thought you were gonna come there. But anyway, he just said he had talked to their foreman and that you guys kind of got an agreement. And we were, we just said that, well, if you guys got an agreement and you're okay with it, then we'll just get something written up, okay, you know, this is what we're doing and stuff like that. We don't care. We just want something that's righty till everybody knows what's going on.
Right, Tyler did come out, the city street department foreman or whatever, did come out. We did, we did have a discussion and we kind of come to a mutual agreement on it. But I mean, obviously, we can't, we can't, we don't get the final say. It's between this board and the city's board. That's why I handed that sheet out. We would take C and B and A and then they would take D because that splits it. And then obviously, B's way out, so that's, that's kind of a gimme. A, there's no, from what I understood from Tyler, there's nothing along A, there's no city lots, so they couldn't even assess anybody out there, so. It's tough to, for them to foot that bill if they can't even assess anybody.
A, B, and C, the county would take the responsibility.
Right. And then they would take D since it kind of splits and then part of that Dollar General is, you look at the city's outline, it's jogged out there to get it. So I'm like, wow, you guys can just take that, so.
So as far as, we didn't even talk about the responsibilities. We're probably talking about paying for the maintenance, but do you guys still have any kind of an agreement? Just on things like snow removal or anything too, or?
Right, we were gonna see what happened here, if you guys agreed to this. And then, yeah, we, we kind of just threw around some ideas, like they would still kind of do the snow in, you know, emergencies, stuff like that.
Sure.
We would, we would tar it, we might even actually tar D for them because we start earlier than they do, so. And that's on the outskirts because in the cities, it takes longer for the ice and stuff to get off the roads if you get snow and stuff like that. So we kind of have a mutual aid agreement between the city, like, we'd have it in paper though, or in documented though, so. But I didn't see a problem with doing B, C, and A for the county, so.
Well, that's why, if you guys do an agreement, I just want something in right next.
Right, right, so with it. I know they, they were planning on being here, Tyler said, and then the mayor couldn't be here or something, but. It sounded like he had the full support of the mayor behind him, whatever he kind of decided, so. Just gonna run it by you guys and see what your thoughts were on it, so.
Well, in all fairness, A, B, and C are both, are all three at least outside of the city limits, so that probably would fall under the county's, you know. If they wanna move a little snow on it or help out a little here and there, I think that's fine. But as far as fixing them, I'm assuming the county paid them back in the day, but they're outside of city limits, so. So I mean, that seemed like a reasonable agreement, I guess, so.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, it would just be easier to have something clarified so that way I would sit the next batch of people involved in any decisions, doesn't have to debate whose job it is and reinvent the wheel.
What does that consist of, A, B, and C as far as area, length?
Probably about three quarters of a mile, two miles.
A mile costs you, what, a million bucks to re-tar, resurface?
Uh, no, A would, A, let's see, A would cost twenty-three, twenty.
And how long is that?
Uh, they don't give me the footage.
What, a quarter? A quarter mile?
Yeah, it's about a quarter mile. So you can take off?
Two hundred and fifty grand.
Yeah, specifically from the.
The engineer's estimate to do A, B, C, and D was a hundred and three-five. That was chip sealing and fog, fog coating. Um, so you can subtract about twelve grand, so you're like ninety, eighty, eighty-some thousand or ninety, a hundred and one, give or take, you know, that's just an engineer's estimate, so. And really, the, um, the city's engineering firm had A as a hundred percent county funded, B as a hundred percent county, C as a hundred percent county, and then D was fifty-fifty split with the city, so. We'd be giving up a little bit. This all stems from, I guess, a couple of years ago of who had the authority to shut a road down or something like that, so.
That's where, that's basically where it started.
Right, so and then now we'll, you know, if we, only one we wouldn't have authority of shutting down would be the highway coming into the city, so.
Well, and then there is always the conversation, even like with snow removal, like some people view it as a county road, some people view it as a city. Well, if the city got out there first, they did, it's, and everybody's like, well, it's a city road, I'm the next guy. Oh, it's a county road, and so.
Right.
Doesn't really matter essentially, as long as we just agree, let's just get it over with. Like, I mean, Bob Jobe and, and Pork Lawler and Al Holm had a different view than, than, you know, me and Gary and you and Tyler now, and like, let's just straighten that out. It, it really doesn't matter. It just matters that we straighten it out. We all agree it should, like, let's just iron it out. Yeah, so, because even like next time there's a funding issue, well, who pays for it? Why you should sit there debating something that, let's just sort it out and get it done. So I don't, I mean, I view anything outside of the city property as probably county. That's just, it's the same thing with us on our road right away. Anything outside road right away is private. The city can't be fixing things that's outside their jurisdiction, just like we shouldn't be, so it makes perfect sense, so I, I mean, either way, you know, so.
For the better of all.
And same thing with the maintenance agreement stuff. I think just whatever you and Tyler agree to, just get it down. Like, if Tyler wants to do more snow removal or less, no matter what, it's gotta get done. And then we know what our responsibility is and they know what theirs is, so.
Right, like sometimes he was saying that they'll sand A all the way out to the highway, you know, if it's, because the people gotta get in and out, you know, so.
Well, and that.
We don't have a sander, so that works great for us. And then like C and, C and B, that intersection right there where they meet up, is kind of a snow trap. So sometimes they get a small drift there. If they're plowing and they see it, they just go up and grab it quick because we're probably not going out because we don't go out unless it's, you know, more than two inches. So they go out and get everything all the time, so.
And that is another gap me out of the whole deal was like, what if we're sanding it? Because they have the equipment and we don't to sand that short stretch. They're already out doing it, it's fine.
Right.
We either need to be doing something in return or probably reimbursing them. You don't, we need to have an agreement so that way it's not like next, somebody gets on there like, well, they should be paying for sand. Well, we don't because we do this. Well, let's just get it on paper. If we do mowing because they do sanding or whatever, just get an agreement to, or if not.
Just have an agreement because it really don't matter if we squat there.
It really doesn't, and then we're gonna, you know, we bought that crack seal and oil storage tank now, so they're gonna probably end up getting our, the crack seal and oil from us, so.
Right.
We can't survive without them and they can't survive without us.
Right.
We've gotta work together.
We're on good terms. Let's just get an agreement so everybody's on good terms. So now you don't have a couple of people get in, all of a sudden, we're getting free sand from the city. Well, that was a part of the agreement. That's what we're dealing with, so.
Get it on paper so there's no break being pulled.
And you and Tyler just sort out, like, you guys wanna maintain it, whatever's fair to both of you. I don't think anybody here's gonna.
And working forth, so we got it.
Yep.
Okay. So are you guys okay with us taking A, B, and C and then taking D then?
It makes sense, I mean.
Because, I mean, I guess I was never invited to the city council meeting or anything like that.
Yeah, he did.
That's the first thing I've ever heard of it, so.
Yeah, okay.
Well, do you want to mention it to him to invite him to this meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I could definitely go if they wanted to.
Well, they got the meeting tonight.
What time?
I believe it starts at five.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
And I know the mayor's not gonna be there today.
Right, so I mean, I can go, but Tyler just said if they, if you guys agree with it.
I guess visit with Tyler.
Yeah.
Visit with him and see if you should show up for it and go from there.
Okay, I'll do that then, yep.
Cool.
Good.
All right, other than that, it's, uh.
Well, I guess just for the sake of it, Christie, you're here. Are you just auditing or do you wanna say something or?
Well, I just, I, I probably have a couple of questions.
Okay.
About when this starts on Seventeenth Avenue, about hauling gravel. And I, I real, I understand what's gonna happen. The concerns that I have is you're telling my mom and Bernadette, it's their responsibility to haul gravel on what you're calling a driveway. So we do that. You guys raise Seventeenth, the water still backs up over that road. Is that our, again, our responsibility to haul and gravel? Because you're raising the road and the water's coming back. Is it always gonna be, is it, you know, because you're doing it now and you, the plan is to do it again next year to really raise it? That's one question. The other question is, when you start this, and Tyler, I think you said it's gonna take, or Skylar, excuse me, you said it's gonna probably take two weeks of hauling gravel or however long. So they already can't go out where they should go and that will also block off where we are going out.
Right.
Because we're going, because you're gonna gravel, I understand, from the north slough, that little north slough, all the way basically down to the mailbox. Or just north of the mailbox.
Right.
Right.
Well, we pull up the sign, it's, it's three thousand feet, so. Wait, wait, there's a, there's a sign out there that says soft shoulders or something like that?
There, well, actually, there's no sign out there.
No, there's one out there. I know there's, there's one out there. We've, I've been out there a couple of times. There's a sign in the ditch that says soft shoulders or narrow road or something like that. We start there and then we go three thousand feet to the north.
Okay, because if it's, if it's blocking where we're coming out, then what do we do?
Right, which it probably, I think you believe you're going through the field, right, and coming out there?
There's an approach between the two sloughs, there's an approach. That's where we're coming out, in and out.
Um, the only thing I could say is, um, we're gonna work up to that, so after.
Okay.
Till that point, you'd have to go to the north and come around.
Right.
After we get past that, then it will be drivable because we're gonna.
To go to the south.
Then we go to the south. So, I mean, we could definitely work with it to where I make sure that whatever day that is.
Have the respect to call them so they know. I mean, I don't think that's too much to ask, say, okay, we got this far, you can go south now. I don't think that's too much to ask.
No, I think that's reasonable.
Because otherwise, you, you guys are blocking them in and they can't get out, which you say that, you know, they should find other accommodations and everything else. It's their home. It is not up to you guys to decide if they can get in and out. Um, they've already been contacted. They need to move their mailbox up to the Kiddercombe Line in order to get mail. Because right now, guys, they can't get out to get groceries. Their mail, their medicine comes in the mail. So you need to be clear about this. And with them not getting out, I also can't get in. It rains a little bit and we gotta go across that field. There's no getting in and out. We have to, it rains a little bit, we have to wait a couple of days, the wind blows, which does, you know, and, and in and out, I know. Um, I conduct business out of there. I know farmer's market is probably not important to you, but that's how we make money and that's where we conduct businesses out of there. And, you know, I can't, if it rains, I have to wait. Can't go in, can't go out. So. And I'm gonna ask this. If that was a bus route, would we be having this issue about that road, their road getting gravel on it? And we're not asking for gravel on the whole road. We're just asking gravel where the water is at. That's all we're asking. If it was a bus route, would that make a difference? Because it shouldn't, because they are still residents of the county and should be, and, and the county for my whole life has taken care of that road as far as maintaining it. If there was excess gravel that needed to be hauled in on hills or whatever, um, my grandfather, you know, that was taken care of, or the yard, that was taken care of by him. But as far as the, just the, um, the snow removal or whatever, my whole life, the county's been doing that. And you guys, you raised the Seventeenth Avenue, it puts water on that one. So that's what I am asking for clarification. So we, they know, and I know.
Well, as far as like the temporary grade raise here, I mean, that's always been a concern of ours of not wanting to raise the road was that we knew it was gonna get worse everywhere else because that's the problem. It doesn't drain anywhere, so.
Right, I know. And the road, when you walk down that road, the water is higher than the road.
Mm-hmm.
There is a big dip in there.
Right, and that, I mean, the, as far as the official grade raise, you know, if that project takes place next year, I don't know what kind of allowances were allowed as far as off of the right of way, you know, because, you know, if we have to raise the approaches around it or, you know, I don't know how far out they're gonna allow as a part of a project or anything too, or it could get raised in ways, you know, I mean, to make, to accommodate. Because obviously with hydrology, you wanna make. It could get raised in ways, you know, I mean, to make, to accommodate, cause obviously with hydrology, you wanna make sure you got culverts around it, that.
Right.
So they might view that and go, hey, we need to build that up and put a bigger culvert in to make the rest of the road work, I don't, I don't know that, so the long term. Vision, that would kinda be up to the DOT, and then as far as the regulations go, you know, how far they cover. I don't know how big a scope the project that'll be, but as far as the temporary one, if we go and raise that thing. Six inches to two feet, whatever ends up working out, yeah, I mean, if we keep getting water, that road, your guys, is, is just gonna get worse.
It, it is getting worse, because last year at least it would dry off a little bit, it would dry off, and we could drive through, there's no, there's been constantly water. Since the snow has. It's not going anywhere, and, you know, and, and my mom, she's been walking, being going down to get her mail. Well, um, the other day, I know of three big pieces of equipment that went across there, I have a video of one. And them guys are hauling. I watched a semi, last week, Tuesday, I come out, and I stopped in the middle of the road. Because I've been taking pictures every time I go down, and I stopped at the mailbox, and a semi come from the south, headed north. And that guy hadn't been driving fifty-five, sixty miles an hour.
Yeah.
And he, I wish, I wish I would've videoed it, and I watched him, and he hit that stop spot. And the brakes come on, and the truck was here, and the trailer was over here, and he would've caught that, he would've been in the water. They're driving way too fast through there, and they should know better.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm.
They don't respect the.
No, they don't, and I'm assuming it wasn't a local farmer, but it was, it was their, their truck. It was their hired man driving, cause I didn't reckon, I know it was trucking it, but I don't know who the person driving, cause I seen them. And if, if I would've got off the road, I don't think he would've stopped to wait for me to get off, cause you cannot pass on that road. And they drive through there.
And it's dangerous, those roads get so soft. They don't realize it till they hear.
And it's twelve feet straight down off the edge of that, once you get off that road.
Oh, absolutely.
Twelve feet down to the east side, and it's eleven and a half.
This isn't the first time it's been raised, I know when my dad was commissioner, cause we were talking about it. And he said that they raised it, I think Alex John, maybe the road supervisor, and they raised it, I think, three or four feet last time, and it basically came straight up. Kind of an emergency grade raise deal again, so that's why, cause I mentioned it, Dan goes, you have to raise it again, and I'm like, well, I didn't know, guys, yeah, it's been raised. Probably twice, that's why it's so ugly on the sides, cause it's like, anything, it's great raise it, you just create this big slope, yeah.
They raised it then two, three times, it's rated bankers, and some kids hit it.
Yeah.
And went down, and that scared them, it was no more a racetrack, that scared them.
Well, a gentleman did drive off a bit about, I don't know, eighteen, eighteen years ago, he did go off a bit, he's in the water.
I mean, this time, we're gonna, when we're, when we're said and done, we will, we'll have to reduce the speed, and then we will put up object markers, just like. Those object markers will.
Yeah.
Have to put them up.
Can we reduce the speeds, because it was kind of an issue not too long ago, about reducing speed?
Well, we have to through there, because we're.
You have to.
We have to through that. We're gonna narrow it up even a little bit more when we go up now.
We'll be taking turns.
Just about, you know.
You gotta yield to one another.
Yeah.
Some of that time, so, I mean, it's.
Cause my daughter and son went through it on Saturday, and somebody was coming from Rata, and they weren't across it yet, and.
Can't wait.
And right, would not stop to wait, and they knew to get out of there, my kids knew to get out of there, but this person coming, no.
It's no different there than on eighty-three, south of Lenta by Beaver Creek, those bridges, if somebody's with a wide load. You just yield one or the other.
Yeah.
It's common sense, respect to one another.
So, right now, we plan on coming up, well, fifteen inches.
Are you?
Yep.
So it's gonna get steeper, yeah.
Well, we'll narrow it up a little bit, yeah, you know, that's why we've gotta put a little bit of rip rap along there, just to protect the gravel.
One way, period, yeah, most of one way.
You plan on starting that relatively soon, right?
Uh, next week.
Next week.
Can you, you could post it down to fifteen mile an hour, could you?
Uh, we're gonna go down to twenty-five. It's, cause there's regulations, you can't go from fifty-five, we've gotta drop it in.
In increments.
Increments, right, so we gotta go down to.
You know, people, if they okay, that's the problem.
Well, we still have to post, if they don't follow it.
Right, that's, that's, that's all right, that's their chicken.
I know it's a tough deal for your folks out there.
Well, the thing is, though, the comments are, well, they shouldn't live out there, but here's the deal, even if that is the case. How would we move them out of there? They, they own their house, how, you couldn't move it out of there, so that, just move, just move them. No, that, where they're at, they are fine there, the problem is, they do not have a safe part of their road to get to the Seventeenth Avenue. That's it, otherwise, there's no reason for them not being out there.
Well, the other problem is, uh, utility company or anybody else trying to get in.
Absolute, well, yeah, they were up to come in last fall, the, um, trees, they wore up the road. The garbage truck comes in, I mean, we call him when it's, when it hasn't rained for a few days, and we call him, and he comes across the field.
It's too bad, like, these places, you know, you don't want to go off the section line, so say. But the ideal, if they would've went off the section line, the way glaciers carved this, and they had built these roads around these lake beds.
With the section line, there's water.
Yeah, then there would be no water.
There is water.
Where? Oh, the section line, right.
North, there's water.
But if you go back and, uh, they have some aerial images of this in the fifties, that it was pretty dry back there, you know, like in the fifties, that was.
Dry.
Dry, so, yeah.
And then the middle fifties, it started filling up.
Right, it is.
I talked to some guy that, one local up there, that he remembers handing out there.
So, well, my grandpa used to farm that horse.
Right, so.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're dealing with that everywhere, that even like outside of Strasburg, used to be the football field.
Football field, just right in town.
Well, even commissionarily here, I mean, he used to hate Rice Lake, I mean, they used to farm the.
I farmed under, there might be two, wait, three times.
It's just all full of water now.
Our lake by the yard, that was farmed a lot of times, it now doesn't dry up anymore.
Yeah, you're right, but your house is.
And there's no outlet to the north, but it's gotta end up, it starts pushing back into the yard. Then USGAP officially grants you an easement temporary, don't go in and brave it, when the water tables are super high, when you can't get in and brave it.
Yeah.
And other than that, they won't grant you a temporary cut. Or a permanent cut.
So, Simon Josh, you pulling up a picture from a long time ago?
Never owned one.
Uh, between nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen sixty-two?
Yeah, look at the size of that thing now.
And the thing is, it wasn't county to build that road.
Well, common sense said, uh, gravel that, build it up.
I'll do whatever you guys decide to do, so.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it's right that, okay, we haul gravel, and you raise the road, the water's on the road again, and then we gotta haul and gravel, I mean, it's, it's just gonna keep. It's just gonna keep doing it, and that, I mean, that isn't right either. You can't raise the road and flood someone else's property, so they can't get in and out their access.
And I guess we'll have to probably check with. Wold or whatever, and see what the scope of the work can be, cause if we do go up the grade raise, and then we, we can't, if. The scope of work doesn't allow it to raise that road, then that's a whole nother issue.
Right, well, again, that's the reason why even last year, when this first really started becoming a problem, why we didn't do anything, was the fear that. We raise the road there, it just raises the water everywhere else, you're gonna end up more land, you're gonna, you know, swallow up the access road going into Carlson's Place, you know, and. Probably be looking at raising the grade again and finding, you know, I mean, it doesn't drain anywhere, that's the trouble, I mean. Can't abandon the road, but our point was, is maybe it would dry down, and you were trying to alleviate those issues, but obviously, it's not doing that, and we had the winter we were hoping for. But then the spring we wanted, kind of, it's a great spring, except for situations like this, and that's, that's the problem, so now we're right back in the same boat, where that water is. As higher, higher than it was last year, so now we're in the same situation, where if it would've went down a foot. Probably wouldn't really even be talking about it much, but it didn't, so.
And the gentleman that purchased the property on the west side of the Seventeenth. Told my sister that in the deed, that it is written that that water cannot be drained for like another ten years or something like that. He had, it said it's in his deed, so I don't know if you guys know anything about that kind of stuff, but.
To do what? He can drain the water after ten years?
Yeah, that it must have been put into something for so many years.
Or adesment or ducts unlimited or something.
Right, and then it, then, because.
He could tile it out?
Then it could be drained, but I don't know. They just purchased that other quarter of land on the other side there, um, last, like, like, yes, or, I see, um. Summer, last summer, or late in the fall, or whatever, they purchased the other side.
The snow tail, honestly, I think the snow tail has changed a lot for water evaporation.
I know I went into the recorder's office and looked at any. Uh, any like right of ways or anything that would, you know. Help answer some questions as far as where these roads are supposed to be and all this, but the, uh, the only thing I found is there's a fifty-foot easement. And I don't remember which colunda it was, it might've been your uncle, grandfather, something like that, but, um. There's a fifty-foot easement between the colundas and another landowner, I can't remember who it was, that was the only thing recorded in the. In the recorder's office, and that literally was that road, so. I mean, that's the reason for the discrepancy, was that it's, to my knowledge, that road is a public right of way, but. Cause it's not on the section line, right, it's on a quarter line.
Yep, it's on a quarter line.
Yeah, and, and that was the, and historically, from the other roads we found, where they were built on a quarter line instead of the section line. The county did create right of way usually, like they did for like that Vogel Farm was one. And same with the one that goes by John Richters, back to like Jack Doctor, then that's eighty-second and a half, because they couldn't put it on eighty-second. And there is right of way heated in the courthouse to make public right of way.
Is there, is there one that goes into the, it used to be the Johnson Farm, but now James Silvernagle owns it, is there, what is that? Is there?
I didn't, I didn't look for that, I only looked in that quarter section there that.
You know, exactly, that.
Right. I mean, I'm not saying that the county didn't build them, or did, or whatever, but there was no public right of way, so I, I don't really know.
Could've been possibly just forgot to file it.
Well, I mean, it is, but I guess it just, I mean, and I'm not saying we can't or can't do anything, I'm just telling you that I looked into it, and there was no public right of way created. If we wanna create one, if we wanna do it, if that's an obligation you guys wanna take on, that's fine, I'm just. Telling you, the research I did showed that there was nothing but a fifty-foot easement, and I believe it came off of the section line where Seventeenth Avenue is, and went in. It literally, there was a map of it, and I drew the exact map of the road going into the farmyard, and that was an easement between two landowners, that, that obviously.
I'm, I'm wondering, is that my mom, and they did that ten acres out for her to build her house?
I'm not really sure exactly, I just remember that was because I had Kathy look into it, she said she did find one easement, and I thought, here it is, this is gonna be the county. And here it was just, it was signed by the colundas, and I can't remember the landowner that was there, but it was from like the seventies? Sixties? It's old, I mean.
Yeah, I think they added it when they did the plot for that.
And that could be.
Yeah, then they added that access easement.
Right, my mom did that, cause that's why that little ten acres, odd little, cause her house is in there, because the intentions were, she was gonna, not. The house was gonna go further up and into the pasture, cause there was a well there, but then getting utilities and also building a road, so that's why. She built her house there in the farmyard.
See, I'm not condemning anything, but I've got two trees, the trees weren't there years ago, and, I mean, they're beautiful. But they hold snow like a snow fence, and all that excess snow that's held in them trees all end up in these potholes. And I think that's where a lot of these problems are started, from a lot of them, I've got it also, just all the melt. If it's fast, all comes down into these lake beds. And it's gotta be beautiful up there with all those trees, I've never been up there. It's gotta be.
Them trees were planted when Galen Olson owned the property.
An Olson, okay.
But that has nothing to do with the other quarter.
Well, I think for the sake of answering your questions, I think the first question is, is you're gonna start on that project next week. And then the other idea is, is we're going to coordinate with your folks, and you probably. Right, and let them know the best path in and out, until, you know, we have this road approved. As far as the, the driveway, we'll call it, for the sake of the conversation, if that goes further underwater because of what we raised it at, I mean, that's. I don't think there's really anything we're gonna do further to this point, unless we're gonna raise that driveway, so. If that's something I wanna decide as a commission, that's fine, but. That's something that a decision has to get made, if you want Skylar to raise that driveway or something, and add a culvert or whatever to keep that driveway going.
I don't think we'd have to add a culvert or anything, I mean, there's gotta be one in there, right?
I don't think there is, I really don't think there is a culvert.
I would have to look into it a little bit, cause.
See, I was assuming it was a culvert because of the drainage on the other side, but maybe that just holds water too, cause it is kind of a puddle area, so I mean. I, I would assume that had to equalize a little bit, maybe.
Well, when they built that road, though, back in the fifties, that was all dry there, so there's no need for a culvert.
I don't think there is a.
There is no culvert.
No, because we would, you know, um, mow, you know.
The ditches?
The ditch, I mean, the ditch, you can't really mow, cause it's.
So, wait, Josh, keep that there once.
But I don't think there is a culvert in there.
Starting, so, the way they come out is they use the road up until they get close to the water, and then they go to the south and around, and.
No.
No, no, go up, and you come straight up.
Oh, so they're going in the north all the way?
We're coming.
Right.
She's got a trail that goes through there.
Okay.
And then goes to the right, to the first curve by the trees there.
Okay.
If, so you go, we go straight west, and then you turn and go north, and come through that field there.
Okay.
And it's, rather, my mom made the trail, and it's relatively all on the high side of everything.
Yeah.
But there is a couple spots it gets water in. Cause there's no other way out.
No.
What a bad deal.
Yeah, from that, you see that yellow sign there, actually, yeah, from that yellow sign, it's about from there, three thousand feet up. To the north is where we're, we're going to.
But these ditches are shallower to the south, aren't they?
Yeah, pretty shallow.
One of the biggest problems with the whole area is, there's just nowhere to, I mean, even, even if we were gonna entertain the idea of pumping it like last year. Maybe we have a look into it, we were gonna have to go underneath the road and pump it for a few hundred feet to get to James Silvernagle's pasture. Which is still gonna fill a pothole, it's just that that pothole would fill up big enough until it did finally drain out and go downstream, and. You know, even James was kinda hesitant, I mean, he didn't say no, but he was like, well, I suppose if you haven't, like, you're gonna flood.
Much of the pasture.
Dozen acres of his pasture, and then, who knows where it's gonna go from there, and so that was where even draining it was just not. I mean, it probably could be done, but.
Is there a creek that you could drain Tyler's into?
No.
No way.
There's no creek.
No creek, no.
I think it, I think it puddle jumps until it gets to probably Long Lake or somewhere around there, but it'd have to go through a lot of puddles and a lot of ditches. And fill up every little hole until it gets to Long Lake.
I don't hope that you could, if it could be drained to the east, to that big slough.
I don't think so, cause we looked into that, and there was a huge elevation change there.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, that was, that the only real, like, gravity flat area was to go out. Basically to the west, down with the, you'd have to go across the intersection to go to James's water hole there, then from there.
His would get his.
It kinda goes to the southwest, it goes to that pothole, so you could fill up every pothole and inundate everyone's field and pasture. Until it got high enough to spill into the next spot, and spill into the next spot, that one actually, if it goes that way, it's probably gonna go all the way down to.
Well, then following that creek.
It'll go into the creek.
Right, so no matter where you're going, it's gotta go at least a couple miles, whether it would.
But it would drain out, down to that creek down below, possibly, cause this one way to keep scrolling out. Looking at the green vegetation, keep going down, and then all the way down to, right into there, what's that?
That's the creek that goes, that's like the Wobon Creek, we always call it, whatever that goes, and that's, yeah, that's the one, I mean, that goes all the way.
And you see this, that's the way it would be entertained.
Right. It's either that or it might follow that roadway, and if it did that, then it would go, because it's either gonna go to Long Lake or it's gotta go to that Braddock Creek, whatever.
Right, because in the spring, um, when I was in high school, my sister and I sometimes would drive across and we'd come up that section line, but we knew in the spring not to do it because it was wet back there.
Yeah.
You know, not coming in on seventh or eighteenth to go into town to school, we would cut across through Johnson's yard and then.
Oh.
There were times of the year you did not.
You didn't do it.
Because basically that road is, it's not a road, it's a section line and.
The troublesome part with all of that too is like we'd said, it's kind of one of them, it's gotta fill a bucket, fill a bucket, fill a bucket, you know, so you, the kind of damage, you might save one road here, but now you're inundating someone's acres, or you might, right, in that water, if it gets to Braddock, now you're maybe impacting the road going into Braddock, you're talking about any of the roads going along the Federal Aid roads, now you're talking, you know, well, Rex and Fonda's, David Fonda's place where the water goes under there. I mean, I'm not saying it can't be done, but those are the impacts where it's like, oh, we'll just drain it, and it's like, well, you, you might uh, you might cause problems even worse than we have, so that's always just the trouble, there's just, this is just a big, big cereal.
It's nature you're working with.
Yep. But.
And nature's tougher than us.
Well, I would say the big thing for now would be to move on as planned, hopefully within the next week or so you're thinking, coordinate with them on in access in and out, and let's see what happens if the water comes up or down, and we'll have to make a decision from there, I guess, if it gets worse or.
Did you bring somebody on board, some contractor, hand down trucks or no?
Yep.
Okay.
Just waiting for, they were gonna send me the final quote today.
How many trucks can you get lined up? Local or just?
Um, they're gonna try to use a local guy on that can help out here and there, um, but for sure four, um, so up to five if that local guy can help out here and there, and then possibly another one, so four for sure, I believe, so.
Four for sure.
Yeah, they were still finalizing the details on their end, they had a transmission problem on one of them, so they were.
With this contractor?
Yeah.
Who did you bring on board, to be asked?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, uh, it'd be Shavinsky, they were the most ones, um, and I contacted probably eight different contractors and one of them, I mean, some of them said no, but they don't have time or they didn't have trucks, and then some of them were just, the, the prices were higher, so. The prices actually for the truck was the same, but their mobilization was different, so.
And are we possibly gonna get to Shavinsky?
Yep, yeah, next week, like we've been.
Okay.
June tenth is when we want to start.
Oh, good.
Oh, good.
And you're expecting probably two weeks to three weeks?
Uh, we're hoping, we're hoping two weeks to, two weeks or under to get the gravel down and everything like that, then we'll have to rip rap and then also put the signs up and everything like that, so. I mean, for the majority of it, it'll be hopefully two weeks, and then, you know, rip rap, we don't have to rip rap everything, just do the slow, low area where it's, um.
The deepest point.
Yeah, because when you get further north, it's still, the road's soft, but the water's not as close to the road, so it's not a fear at this point, or not a concern at this point for washing the gravel away or whatever, just do the main heart of that where it's really low, we're actually, some of the water was on top of the road, they kind of built some berms out there to hold the water back a little bit, um, but talked to the engineering firms and they said just knock the berms flat and roll that stuff out in the water and then just build up over the top of it, so.
Do we have any of these yellow bags that they use, you see like contractors use them on the rice slate to keep the waves from eating the roadway? On your deepest points?
Uh, those yellow things that you see floating in there, that's not actually for waves, that's actually what they call a flotation curtain, it's actually designed to um, keep the sediment from going out so far. If, if we're talking about the same thing, like when you see along construction projects, that's actually designed to keep the sediment from going further out, it contains it to that small area, so it's a, just a big piece of styrofoam on top with a tar hanging down. And they call that actually flotation silk curtain, flotation.
To keep it from cutting, the waves coming.
No, it's really designed for the sediment, it's, I mean, it might help for that, but it's designed to keep the sediment from going everywhere, it just keeps it in that small area. It's an environmental thing, same, same with like sediment fence or erosion control or straw blank, because it's designed to keep that.
What is that, if there's some of your concerns of these, Kristy?
Yeah, I just mean, they need to know they can get in and out.
Yeah.
Because you need, they need to be able to get their mail and get groceries, and I need to be able to get in.
Do you have their contact?
Do you have their numbers? Uh, I probably do in my email or in my text messages somewhere, but if you wanna give it on camera or just wait till we're off camera, I can give, I give it.
Well, let's just make sure we get all the right numbers, so.
Right, that way, yep.
Well, I was taking for granted that the blade man had some of these numbers, but it's not always the case, so yeah, just make sure you swap information and get everything taken care of there, so. Um, with that, I guess, uh, we can probably move on.
Yeah, that was pretty much my biggest discussion today, I guess, was gonna be about that road.
Well, I guess, I'll, I'll bring up a thought process I had when we were discussing our, you know, I'm trying to figure out how we can get gravel on these roads, you know, you know, we, we talked about feasibility and, I mean, spending half, if you're gonna spend a half million dollars, what are you gonna get for it? I guess, it probably comes down to what we had talked about, is probably just what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to spot gravel, but I think what we need to do is we need to make sure that we're picking the best spots, or would I, not to insult anybody or say you've been doing it wrong, but we just probably need to key in on an area and just spot gravel that area, like instead of what we always do is we're trying to just respond, and we're responding all over the county, we need to do almost like a spot graveling project in an area, like let's pick a hundred miles west of Hazleton, you know, just for, and, and just go, you know what, we're just gonna focus on this, we're gonna give it a week. You know, and, and we're gonna go out, maybe you take the time with one or two guys and you just drive around with a pickup something fast and you just flag like, man, we know this hill is bad, we know this little spot, this quarter mile is horrible looking, and just try and heal up some of these spots because, I, I'll tell you guys, so Friday I had to go up to Kidder County, it was in southern Kidder County, I couldn't use the Carlson Road seventeen avenue, I could maybe, but I had my well truck, which is a big town truck. So I went to Moffitt and I went east along the Long Lake Refuge on Burley County, and then I had to go to Kidder County. I didn't feel like those roads, which are pretty popular roads, were any worse than a lot of our roads, right? There were stretches you drove for three miles and you could do fifty-five and it was great, then all of a sudden, oh my god, you had to get over because there was a giant black hole, literally it was black, so there was no gravel in it, it's been pounded out, and it just kinda hit me, and it's like, you know, if you spot gravel that route that I took in maybe two, three days, you healed that, I probably took fifteen miles of gravel, but about three of it probably really needed some gravel, maybe not even three miles. And that's where it just, I think that's the only way, if, if we're gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think you bring a contractor, you bring the four or five trucks, you shrink down the spot graveling, so you're, you're trying to heal a hundred, two hundred miles of summer in a couple weeks, and, and you're not gonna get them all, it's not gonna be perfect, but if you could eliminate fourteen horrible spots to four, I mean, that's an improvement, and that's all you can do, I mean, that's, I just, and I want, I wanted to say that because I think we probably expected a lot, like, oh, we're gonna come up with this quadrant and we're gonna gravel it and we're gonna do that, it's not feasible, and we're never gonna get three inches of gravel on all our roads, and it just won't happen.
You're just gonna always have other problems.
Right, and I don't wanna discredit what's been going on. I, I think what we're doing is what we should be doing, we, we, we did the Westfield area that, you know, we tried that, I think some good things about it, maybe we didn't cover as much as we wanted to, and we learned from that, we're trying to make a better project next year, well, we're gonna get three inches on everything, well, that, that's not feasible, but we have to have those discussions, I don't think we waste it any time, but it just, it just, the realization came that it's like, we're only gonna be able to spot gravel, because it's the only way we're gonna get enough done with the money that we're gonna spend, you'll never, we're either gonna overspend and underdeliver or we're gonna underspend and underdeliver, either way, we're gonna underdeliver, so I think that the contractor part's great, we just need to be surgical with our spot gravel, like, I mean, just, even if you took the crew for half a day and were just like, okay, we're gonna focus on, whatever, pick an area, and maybe you pick three areas, maybe you can get more than one area done, where you're like, man, we did that in four days and we're kinda done, let's move down to south of wherever, you know, and, and just try and pick off a gravel pile and go run four or five trucks for a week in this area and just try and heal these. You're not gonna get them all.
You're never gonna get them, I drove roads, Skylar, not taking great nobody, but I just drove the roads that we really hit hard last year in the Westfield area. You can take that Federal Aid road from the hall of the Westfield School and take that all the way down to Eight Mile Corner, there's really two spots there between Les Breitman and the rain pool on that Federal Aid road that are soft, and it's like there's just, there's no bottom, they just need to be addressed, I don't know if we got to haul some small rock on it and then gravel it, I don't know, but it'll just a small area, maybe from here, this area like here, that need to be addressed. And all the gravel we haul, it's crazy when you blade that road, they say, well, it was the gravel coming from, I don't know where they talk, that wasn't from. Where did it come from? They said it's all that lumber they brought from Tendrick.
No, well, we didn't haul any, like, I have, all that Tendrick gravel was on the roads well before I was road superintendent, the gravel that we hauled from right at Eight Mile Corner there, where it's down south on Union Drive.
Yep.
That and that Federal Aid road all come from the.
Knoll pit?
The Knoll pit.
Okay.
And then from the Eight Mile, that's where we started using Van de Vors, we went down
Okay.
Van de Vors and then on ninety-six, I believe it's ninety-six or ninety-fifth where it splits there, but why is that guy?
Is that by the substation?
Yes, well, well, yes, I believe that is by the substation.
To the north, right?
Yep, like.
Where it was pounded out real bad from these guys hauling a lot of grain down the Pollock. Because they said that road is good, now they said that must be Van de Vors gravel.
Well, I guess what substation?
The road going to Don Larson and Jason Larson.
Oh, that's ninety-fifth or whatever.
I think it's the road on the east-west side that goes north, up to the cross, the road we call.
Yeah, well, that's part of the one that we graved this winter too.
With Newscast gravel, I mean, Van de Vors gravel.
Yep.
See, and they, they ought to talk highly about that.
I'll wait till it dries out, and then they're gonna.
It's, it's one of the.
Then it starts washing board like a crazy.
But I mean, the trouble with that is, the, the Van de Vors gravel in certain places would be glorious, just like the Wobom gravel, if, if we have all the raw, we have all the rawm gravel in the wrong places or what. Well, and it's natural, right? The area that's mugging has clay, when you crush gravel in that area, it has more clay. The same area that needs clay, when you crush gravel down there, you're short of clay, it's just kinda like, I mean, like you said, you're fighting nature, you're not gonna get clay in a sandy area, so that's where even the argument comes through with like, with spending the money, it's like, I know it's horrible, blasphemy to talk about hauling something thirty miles, but if you're gonna haul the gravel to the right spot, and you, you can either keep hauling the rawm gravel on the wrong roads and pay for it here, 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 or you can bite the bullet and go, you know what, we're gonna run that Van de Vors gravel up to west of Hazleton and up to Glen, or you know, Glenco and some of them muddier areas, yeah, you're gonna have to haul it up eighteen oh four, you're gonna have to pay for some, some fuel and stuff, but I, I think that's just where like, we need to keep improving our processes, and one of them is like, well, we always gravel the closest roads off of that pit, well, that pit's been getting the same gravel for twenty years, and that's why the road is what it is, you know.
But like you said, wait till it dries.
Well, a perfect example is we put thirty loads on that Cattail Road on Ninth going towards the Cattail Bay, and they thought it was awesome, the day it rained, and they were like, well, you didn't do, it's horrible, you're the, it's, we're throwing the county now, and it's like.
What I'm getting though is, I, the reason why I know it works is you take the road, the old highway that goes by my place.
Yep.
That had just, it's volcanic ash up there, which is basically the worst handed clay on the planet when it's wet. And they had Van de Vors gravel stockpiled at the shop, so when Al wanted gravel on those hilltops, they brought it from the shop. That stuff blended so nice with that clay that it's actually holding because it had everything, we already had the clay, we didn't need binder, we needed rock and sand, I will. And they only hauled, I think fifteen loads between Tendrick and Litton, which is not a lot,
No.
and it healed a lot, I mean, there's still some greasy spots, it's not perfect, but it healed a lot of that road, and so that's where, like, that's where you're going, wow, that's something that works, like, if you would've went and hauled from Calvin Mush's pit or Wobom onto that hilltop, it probably got worse, yeah, you would have rock with it, but you would have more clay, and so, I'm not saying we, we're gonna be perfect with everything, but I'm just, it always comes to the conversation of like, well, let's use an example, like we talked about gravel, and I think it's fifty ninth or fifty seventh that goes by Jeff, Deb and Joey Culvers.
They're working on that today, actually.
That's tough.
Well, but I'm just saying, like, there's a scenario where it's like, well, you can't haul it out of Van de Vors, it's too far, you, and you're going, well.
Well, we're, we're hauling it out of the Wobom pit, we're using the new Wobom gravel, and we're changing the way we're doing it a little bit, we're gonna put it on a little different, so we're gonna see how it goes, like.
And that's fine, but my point is, is like, right, the way you rule off, like, well, it should be nice to have this gravel, but it's too far, and it's like, they need to just eat it maybe for a day or two and haul some of the other gravel and blend, you know, we always talk about blending material, we're gonna try, that's where I think sometimes we need to make just little different decisions with some of that stuff, but.
Sure aggression that looked today.
Right, yeah, they were, when I was coming to the meeting, they'd already, they were loading their second load already, so.
What's the, that, what's your name, uh, she was a Crumb Bridget, did they talk to you?
Godson?
Is that hill that bad at most, do you have?
Well, I don't know, it wasn't that bad when we were out there, like, because.
Which hill are you talking about?
The day before it rained, you were there.
Right, it was after, it rained over there.
Well.
Because you had, you had gravel, I think, the day before, Charlie said, right?
Right.
And they were, they were thankful about that, but they said, what do we do? I said, yeah, new gravel's a nightmare. It can be a nightmare when you get a slow rain, which it was, and they, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we through the whole first wave of rain with those couple weeks or whatever, then, yeah, I got, then she called the sheriff's department and then I got the text message, so I called her and she, she's like, it's not a blade issue, it's a, it's a gravel issue, so then I'm like, I can't guarantee anything, but I'm gonna try to get you some gravel out there, so. We went and ground it, we shaved the shoulders a little bit so it drained a little bit, and then it rained, and then I got a call from the sheriff's department, then she called and said it was worse than when we worked on it, so, or worse than before, so. You're, you're danged if you do and you're danged if you don't, so, I mean, but it's new gravel, but they also are realizing they're pulling a giant fifth wheel stock trailer up and, I heal after it rains, it's like expectations, people. I mean, I get it, I understand all these people's concerns, but once again, you just heard it from there, trucks doing fifty-five, no, they don't care about stuff, and they expect us just to come in and
Correct it.
snap our fingers and it's not the blade guy's fault, it's not, I mean, it's, it's.
It's a battle.
It's an uphill battle, and I mean, we did, you know, we did, the first year I was here, we did a whole lot of area and around the Hazleton area of doing that spot gravel and stuff like that. Well, that road, that hilltop was one of them, and, and what are we, two years later, it's back to.
Well, it's a steep.
That's a tough area.
Right.
Those hills are tough.
Well, the reason I was gonna say that is because that First Avenue Hill, so like, if you're going off that main Federal Aid road and then you turn like where my parents' place is, and that's First Avenue, and then going north goes to Jenny Mox, which that road can use gravel, you go up that hill though, like even in first gear on the track, I mean, you have to shift down, you can't just make it in road gear, because we hate up there, we have pasture up there. That is ugly hill, so I know like when I get close to it, it's like, well, you can gravel that hill, it's gonna end up in that bottom in a year or two, and that's, I just feel when you ask about the hill, because that First Avenue Hill, it needs some work too, but it's just so difficult to maintain, it's such a steep hill. I mean, it's, but that's another.
It's tough.
Yeah, and remember, these were all punched in back in the forties and fifties where they just knocked the tops off and.
Well, yeah, there's no ditch there, but the only thing that saves it, because sometimes when someone comes over the hill, at least you can take the ditch, but you can't take it everywhere, because otherwise you'll end up in Glenn Schumacher's Valley. So, well, you probably held the garbage truck, that's a horrible hill, so. I mean, you're gonna struggle maintaining, and the best you can do is try and just put gravel on when you can and, you know, try and get it back in and open skips, and, and any year that you get high moisture like this, you're just gonna lose it.
You gotta learn to win with it, I mean, a lot of it.
I talked to a fellow, he sells this base one, have you ever heard of base one? Yeah, we were, we've just, we've had some internal discussions on it. Okay. Yeah, it doesn't work in like sandy areas. Yeah, he said you have to watch what gravel you mix with it. Right, so. It's not for everything. Like on these steep hills, would that hold it if you had the right gravel to keep it from washing out? Our goal was this summer, and please, nobody that's watching these videos quote me on this, but we were gonna try it on Tower Hill here, because that's always one of the
That's another.
Another hill here that we get it, and it's got good clay, and I, I think they use that base one and more of a heavier clay.
Right.
I've talked to a couple different counties, they, they seem to like it, I mean, it's, some like it, some hate it, so. This was a salesman talking, but he said you're. Right, well, they'll sell you anything.
Skylar, how does it work on this crushed cement? Like on this Tower Hill, would that work or no?
Crush, crushed concrete?
Concrete would be good. Or doesn't it?
It's a double edged sword, so it'll lock in and stuff like that if you get it big enough, but I don't care what crusher you have, crush it, there's always a chance of metal, because what do they put in concrete? They put
Rebar.
rebar, or they put that wire mesh and stuff, so then you run into the risk of. Rebar or they put that wire mesh and stuff. So then you run into the risk of people calling in, they get flat tires now every time. Cause I've talked to some counties that have used it and then they've tried to, they're constantly going up there dragging a magnet. Some there, there is like, I know Northern Improvement, I think also Knife River. Um, they send, they sell like what they call blended base. They have road gravel, crushed concrete and asphalt all in together. We, we do have some plans to try some of this stuff, but it's just finding the time to do it. So, I mean.
Do you think we'd have any luck with the cement stabilization? Like would you have by ninety wattles? Like at least just on hilltops? Could you do it in small portions or?
Boy, I'm sure they would.
And you'd have like several of them where you could try and like, you know, like we said, just name these three, four horrible chill spots and try and do that, or you blend that.
I guess we haven't talked, I haven't talked to them about hilltops or where, you know, it's definitely a conversation we can have. This base one is a, a lot cheaper.
Well, yeah.
And we can do it, we can do it in-house. You just mix it with your water. Actually, you just mix it in your water tank. I mean, we, we'll probably have to purchase some equipment to do it, like a sheep's foot backer, you know, cause that's what they want you to do there. And there's a process to it, but it's not.
Well, I think it would be very interesting to try, especially these, we just named three, four hills and we're just struggling to name like. You could come up with an outside of the box idea, though I think it would be worth it. And like you said, with Tower Hill being so close to the shopping and that'd be the first one. You try that. It's easy to mobilize there.
There's a lot of traffic there too.
It's a ton of traffic on that road. I mean, it's a big time road, that's for sure. So it's.
So try and something different.
It's just.
Just to see if it works.
Honestly, sometimes it just comes down to the time and manpower.
It's time?
Yeah. You know, it's just, I mean, that's a three, four person job to do it. Cause once you start, you wanna get it done. Like it's not.
Well, I think it would be, it would be something very good to consider and something, you know, it seems like it's fitting into your timeline. Or if it's a similar project to the area, maybe you just take the extra time and try and, try and do some of these things. We're gonna have to experiment with some of those. It's like we said with the gravel and you experience, try this one time, you try that, you start finding what works. Hopefully you build off of it. But I think even with your gravel and I think my suggestion would be is try to line up a contractor like you did last year. Let's maybe just pick a timeline or a number, something like we did last year. And then let's just be surgical with our spotting. Like pick an area to focus on that dude.
Just draw it up and give it to him.
Right. Cause I mean, the couple of contractors that I've talked to about this other hauling project, I asked them if they would, they ever just give like a year price for moving gravel if it's by the hour or by the ton or by the mile. I mean, if we're gonna do spot gravel, by the mile is probably not the best way to do it, cause it's gonna get super expensive.
Hourly, you just kinda pick the best, you try and do the most gravel and, you know, but, you know, right, but you're.
By the ton's probably the most practical, isn't it?
David, I don't know if they'll give you a bit.
They probably won't give you a bit.
You gotta turn a driving time in spot gravel. That's what's gonna kill you.
I've talked to a bunch of different counties on how they do it. Quite a few of them are doing it by the hour. One of them does it by the miles. It, yeah, I, I mean, as long as you're feeling like you're getting a fair shake and you're getting your product, I think we're okay.
But I think, I think the, the value in the spot gravel and the timing and everything might be some flexibility. You can get a contractor as long as you're not nailing down the timeline. Like, I mean, you obviously wanna give a window. But if you're just like, hey, sometime between June and September, we'd love for you to come here for, give us a week. And then maybe they can give you two, maybe they can give you a week and then it might be a month later, they can give you another week. And if you give that kind of flexibility where someone will come in and be like, yeah, for an awesome filler, cause we got raining down a hundred miles away and we could come over here for a week. And then they tell you, and you're like, hey, we can accommodate that. Have your spots ready.
Right.
Commit two, three blades to that area for that week. And just go, we're just gonna keep blade as fast as you haul and get it packed. Maybe even water some of it, whatever.
How well did they do it years ago? But like Miller and those guys were on the board. They used to have trucks in there every year, I think.
Well, and, and I don't know what happened, but the main thing, I'll say the value of going to those six county meetings, the one value that came from it at least a couple of years ago is, Emmett County is the only county that tried to do its own gravel out of the six counties we meet with. And somewhere along the line, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, we decided that we were gonna try and do it in-house or like, cause I don't know if they use a contract, but like McIntosh, they have one or two gravel trucks. They use it for their culvert projects and they're, you know what I mean? So they don't have to get someone every time. But they said their general gravel hauling, they usually try and hire it out. Kidder County, which it's unfair with Kidder, cause they have several contractors in their company. They have people they can, there's gravel pits and guys that not only have the gravel pits, they own their own trucking company. That's a little bit nicer to deal with, but, but almost everybody that we talked to, they're like, well, you can't do your own gravel hauling. And we're like, well, that's kind of been our problem for the last twenty years. We've been trying to do it in-house. Well, you can't, patch culverts and cut trees and, and, and patch asphalt. Oh, then by the way, get all your gravel hauling done, mow your ditches and do your blade. It just doesn't work.
Cause there was an issue years ago. They were bringing independents in, your truck, my truck, his truck, their truck. And then he knew somebody within the county and then four loads would go into his yard, a buddy, and then we would, yeah.
Right. And it's just, I mean, today's, with today, we can monitor it a little bit better. The way we do it, like, all that stuff was, we, we wrote down every time that they were in the pit and then by the time they got back, so you could tell if they were lagging or went somewhere. And then we knew what, we split the trucks. I mean, last year I think we had, without ours, we had thirteen trucks running. So we would split them between two blade operators. You can tell which, you know, and then even if, if one guy was lagging behind, they'd call him and like, where's he at? So, I mean.
Well, I just, I guess I just feel like if you had, let's just say four trucks, five trucks, and you picked a ten mile stretch of road and you just, you could do that ten mile stretch of road, maybe even in one day. If you had two, three blades, a water truck and all them guys, you just, and then you go to the next mile or two down. You just, instead of hitting the entire road, we just, that's not feasible. I thought it would be. I thought maybe that was the smart thing to do. Hey, let's just do the whole road. It's just not feasible. We will never get it done.
Feasible in this county.
But it's, I mean, it just, it opens everybody's eyes to how much gravel it takes to put that down and how many miles.
Well, I'll say another thing too. I, and I've been critical of it too, about, oh, we should've done more paving. We should've done more paving, but, you take counties like McIntosh and Logan, some of them that have more pavement, they're in a trouble too because, some of that money was maybe state dollars, federal, whatever. And now they gotta maintain an overlay and we've seen what it costs to overlay. You go, go to Beaver Lake State Park one of these days, that's a county paved road. There's a reason it's horribly rough. They can't afford to fix it, I'm sure. And I'm not trying to.
No, not to be.
The realistic scenario is, man, pavement is so great until twenty-five years from now. McIntosh will be in a similar boat. They have a ton of paved roads and it's great. Till they start failing.
Start going.
Where with gravel, I mean, as annoying as it is and as expensive as it seems, we're still in probably a more feasible situation to try and repair our roads. And if you have seventy miles of pavement versus seventeen like we have, so.
Was that Wells County we worked at? They said they had seventy something mile pavement.
Those two guys spoke.
Oh, yeah. For sure. We're, we, when we took people, we have a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty miles per blade. Their eyes get about that big.
Yep.
They think we're nuts. Cause they all have, and same thing with snow roll. That's the reason why they get snow rolled on fascinos. They run these plow trucks on pavement for eighty to a hundred miles of their county. Well, we have seventeen of it. I mean, I mean even.
Big ball game difference.
Even in McIntosh County, they have way less gravel per blade than we do because they have so much pavement. All that stuff going into Zeland. That's their county. That's not state. They might get some fun dollars from the state or the feds, but that's their responsibility. And that's, it's big. I mean, I'm not saying we couldn't use a little more pavement in the county, but, those situations rear their heads later on anyway, so.
They catch up to you eventually.
Yeah, so, but I think the focus should probably be, let's just really focus on a premier spot gravel program.
How do you think?
Oh, for now.
Right, but I mean, really like hyper-focus on an area and just try and really heal that area. So that way when we're leaving, we're not, we always, well, we'll haul here for two days. Every blade guy gets gravel for two days. Well, you just end up mediocrally kinda healing their areas where we need to just, you can still lay your spot gravel in for emergency stuff, but, but you're gonna get a contractor and let's, try and get a huge area where it's like, man, it's not perfect, but it's a heck of a lot better than it was. That's the only way we're gonna be able to do it.
There's no way you bring a rapport up in the county.
Yeah.
Right.
Right? That's why it's really tough.
Well, if you're doing that, like you said, even the recognition of like, gosh, it's not perfect, but damn it, it's the best we can do. I don't see how we can do it anywhere else. We can either do nothing or we can go back to thirty miles a year for half a million dollars and that's just not.
Kind of like in a field. You got a field that needs a spot to be addressed. You go out with the vertical tillage tool and address the spot. You don't do the whole seven hundred, eighty acres of land just because there's two spots that need to be addressed. Cause it looks good. You just can't afford to do it.
Well, I.
See, that's where I'm speaking from a farmer's standpoint.
To commit to the whole road thing, like you said, my original idea was like, well, I'm tired of spot gravel. Let's just do the whole road. But you realize it's, it sounds great until you put pens in the paper. It just, it just not.
Twenty million dollars would cost us roughly.
Yeah. Well, you'd never get it done that way.
It'd be great.
The other stuff would be coming due by the time you even finish the other thing. But.
It's what you do. I mean, it's good. It looks good, but it's.
Right, but I mean, just even when we go on spot gravel, there might be the following year, the year after that, then the spots where we didn't gravel will probably show up.
Probably.
So, I mean, right, so we're all on the same page of like, that's why we were going.
It's just trying to address the problem that are now a problem.
But I, I mean, we need to just do like what we've been doing. Spit all these ideas, put pencil to paper and ask the questions. We're doing what we're supposed to be doing. But you know, we're, we're trying to figure out the best way to do it. Every year, if we are hopefully doing what we're supposed to be doing, we're gonna be making it better and you know.
And it all changes from year to year.
And we're gonna try to crush a little gravel that's ball.
I'm glad you brought that up. There's this funny thing that came this weekend. Something popped up on my Facebook feed. That would've been three years ago. Oh, I did read that. Three years ago is when we had that ten inch rain.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
And I had pictures of roads washed out, culverts laying a hundred feet. We're like, right about the time you conceive this perfect gravel plan, you're gonna fix everything. You get a ten inch rain one night and now you're up there fixing roads you had no intention of fixing. And so I, it's funny you mention that, cause I remember thinking, man, that took a lot of time and resources to just fix that nightmare. And everything else that we were gonna do that week, that month, that summer, got pushed into next year. And, and that's why when people get mad, I totally understand. You said you were gonna do it two years ago. I agree. I am not saying you're wrong, but, I didn't expect a five hundred year event to happen.
That happens.
It is. Same thing with Rice Lake. I mean, the version we had went now Rice Lake. You look at Donnie's place, the water's now like five feet, six feet. But at the time.
We don't control it. They controls us.
So all you can do is best skin with what you got. So I think, I think kinda what you already know, you know, it's a lot of the bad spots. Get them marked out, get them planned.
Maps for these guys. Give them the shivets, go over to get them. If you can get them.
You're gonna have contractors that'll probably tell you they can do it at spur of the moment. If you have something ready, we can accommodate it. That's the way to do it.
Yeah, that's what I've been kinda talking with these ones that I've been getting praises from for this. Just toying with the idea, giving them like, putting out some feelers and.
But I mean, yeah, if you give them that flexibility where they can kinda come and go, I mean, within an obvious way to open, I mean, where it's like, man, we can give you a week, but we don't know when. Just take it. If it's in July, if it's in September, whatever, just have a plan ready to go where you can jump on. And I think kinda what we did last year, you get, you get two weeks and you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is probably the best we can do every year without really changing things. If we wanna go further, then that's a whole other conversation, but it's probably the best we can do.
I would say too.
No, we'll, we'll go back to the drawing board a little bit and figure something out eventually.
That deal with, yeah, what's with the road? Chris Reitman didn't shrug to speak for himself in behalf of himself. I go, did you get a?
No, I never got a chance to go down there. I thought we were, I thought it was settled and then I saw it on the.
Well, yeah, that was on the agenda. I thought it was too. Him and I, when he was down there working, I met Chris down there and his brother Bob. We'd go over to the site and looked at it. And then I had Wendy Wang who gave me a quote, what is it? Uh, to take these stumps out, there's probably what?
Fifty trees. There's probably.
Probably thirty of them, I'll say.
Yeah, about twenty eight.
For a ten inch stub, it costs thirty bucks to grind it flush. He said, I won't pick up the material. That's a Wendy quote. He said, well, Chris said, I'll level that off. That will disappear.
I would've done the same thing. Like I wouldn't pick it up. I'd just spread it around in the ditch and all decompose and.
Twenty inch stub, sixty bucks. Wendy said, if I don't have to move the material, I'll be a lot more flexible. And I said, you're not gonna have to move the material on a county roadway on a ditch. So, yeah, Chris wants to know, he'll cut the stumps down. I don't know how high they should be. I could ask Wendy. Cut them off. He'll get rid of the trees. Chris will get rid of the trees.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
So, and he said, if they just cut the stumps flush, he wants to know if anybody will pick up and help him with the cost of cutting the stumps down flush.
With the grinder?
With a grinder. And Wendy said, he would address it if, you know, if he knew where it's at. I said, I'll pick you up. We'll drive down to look at it. But I need to know if we are willing to help them out to do this, to clean that area up.
Stop, what?
We don't really have no man resource. We have no time put into it. None.
Well, you can rent a lot of the machine too.
We can rent the machine and go down with the skid, but.
Well, I mean, let's just, if you take fifty stumps.
Fifty stumps.
Fifty dollar average is twenty-five hundred dollars. So I mean, you're talking about anywhere fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred bucks to hire someone to go do it rather than, have a machine and one of our guys. I, I think it makes sense to hire it out.
Exactly, exactly.
Right? To get it down, you can keep your guys on the blade.
You get, you.
Right. You wanna, you wanna know my honest opinion? Why are we paying to do any of it? It's their right of way. They should've taken care of it a long time ago.
Well, I think.
But the thing is, is we should've been enforcing it when they were small. So now we should take a little bit of responsibility.
The conversation is that we're gonna get these trees, if we're gonna get these trees out of the right of way though, we're gonna have to probably meet some of these guys in the middle on some of this stuff. I mean, and like you said, we probably should've been enforcing it twenty, thirty years ago. And there are trees in the right of ways around this county. But there's bigger homes than this table thing. So some of them probably don't need to go, but it's not the big deal. But some of this stuff, if you leave you a snow trap, you're leaving vehicle damage issue, you're leaving any kind of issue. If you have somebody that's gonna remove the trees and we go and grind the stumps up for a couple thousand bucks a year to fix some of these issues. I mean, I think you're just gonna have to kinda meet them in the middle to get some of this stuff done, cause.
Great. It's kind of a gray area, isn't it, Joe? Of the central, right?
It's a gray area because like Skyler's point, the landlord's supposed to take care of the right of way and they're supposed to do the mowing and all that stuff. But if that doesn't get done and the county doesn't enforce it and the trees grow, and I know there's a, there's a, AG's opinion out there that says that, if the tree causes a danger to traffic, then the county needs to take care of it. So after a while, it becomes a county problem. And so that's, you know, to Aaron's point, if we're gonna meet in the middle, that's probably the best way.
Smart thing to do.
Cause it could, it could probably land on either way.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to address every tree and every road dish and the whole county, but if it comes to a problem like something like this, it's like, just as our policy, instead of expecting everybody to do it all and then nothing gets done, and then we gotta go and try and sue them or send ugly letters and fight with everybody. You find people that are like, hey, I'll cut the trees down. It's like, hey, we'll grind the stumps. And the grinding, the stump is probably the hardest part, cause it's specialty equipment. Just about everybody's got a chainsaw and stuff. They wanna fell a few trees and get them out of the way and.
But it's a lot of work to move.
What is?
Right. Like I've been, I've talked to a few of them that wanted some trees out. And I was like, if you have a spot for us to dispose of them close, like right in the area, we can probably just take care of them. Like, right?
We won't even have to touch it.
Because, well, right, in this scenario, but there's, not everybody's gonna wanna cut their own trees.
Yep.
So some of them, I'm like, if you have a spot that we can dispose of, when we get some time, we'll just take care of them. Because then it's not really a cost. The only cost to us is just the manpower and this, and our time. Like if we have to start trucking it to landfills and stuff like that, then, then I'm gonna send you a letter and then you can take care of it. And if not, then we'll, you know.
I think some of that's gonna just have to be in case by case basis, cause there's.
Right. I'm willing to work with them.
This is common sense related right now. Big time.
I'm willing to work with anybody else that helps us get rid of trees and brush and, anything that's encroaching on the right of ways, like I'm willing to help them.
Yep.
Work with it.
And you wipe them out.
If, if we can, if we can keep, um, guys and blades and trucks and cut a check and get rid of some of this other type, where I think it's.
We actually have to go out and trim a couple ourselves now because we keep hitting the motor grader and it's like, I'm, I'm done. I'm done scratching this new piece of equipment. I'm just gonna cut them and.
Get rid of them.
I've tipped a few of them out and just left them lay there. They were smaller and it's like, hopefully people start getting the hint. Like, you guys gotta take care of this.
I mean, it's.
You know.
Right. I mean, like I said, just, just, I mean, it is a landlord responsibility, but some of these bigger trees, especially that we weren't probably enforcing it, we're just gonna have to help them on. So on this one, I have, I have no problem. If Wendy wants to go look at it, give us, you know, an estimate, make sure that it's what he thinks it is.
I'll call one or both of you guys and let you know what's going on.
Well, I would probably do that because you don't wanna violate any open reading, open meeting stuff. So I would just, I would say, I don't have a problem with it. So.
So just do it.
I would say if you could just do it.
Okay.
I mean, your commissioner, if you think the price is egregious, don't do it. But if it's something like we're talking about, if we're talking twenty-five hundred dollars, you're gonna spend half of that or more in equipment rental and that.
Oh, man. So plus you got somebody that knows what you're doing.
Well, Wendy does it every day. So I would say anything, just as long as Wendy understands what it is. Well, right, I mean, that goes down there. It's not some crazy.
I'm gonna give them a ride. We'll drive down and look at it so he knows when he's up again.
He looks at it. He thinks he's fine with doing it. And you get Chris to do the trees. That's it. It's just.
Okay. Good deal.
I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Cody was on the agenda eleven forty-five.
I wanted to.
I wanted to, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I got things situated. So, I was, it doesn't, I don't mean to be honest. So, I'm done wasting anybody's time. I came up and said that I got everything squared.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
There was nothing on your agenda for eleven forty?
He was, but then they talked to the sheriff and I just went back off.
Good.
Okay.
So, that's it, Cody? That's all you need?
Yep. I just want, I didn't wanna waste anybody's time. I was just telling you that everything.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's, that's the other one.
I had him on and then the sheriff told me to take him off.
Oh, okay. Let's get to say, I, my agenda items were done after Skyler's like, well, we weren't at eleven forty five anyway somewhere. Okay, cool.
So, yeah, you're gonna take care of that. And if they need anything from us, let us know. We can help out whatever we can. But yeah, I'm all.
I don't think there'll be anything.
None. Yeah, I'm fine. Totally fine with them just spreading it out in the ditch and leaving it lay there and then, I mean, just with the understanding that he's gotta kinda monitor. If he starts to see regrowth, he should spray them or something like that.
Cut them off with a sickle mower.
Well, yeah, which a lot of these could have been done like that.
That's what I've been doing where I've been handling dishes.
We asked him today.
Each big, I'll sack the first guard.
Yeah, that or just get, have a hatchet in there, whatever. But yeah, so, nope, I'm fine with that. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it's, that, for the roads.
I got one other thing.
So, yeah, still do it.
Well, okay, well, on Ninth Avenue, that the, the road that goes past my place, the old highway out here, there's several culverts that are like box culverts. They've been in for forever.
On the highway.
They're this far off the gravel ledge. And I know that because I hate those ditches.
Is that those that got kind of a ridge cement up?
They're flat. You cannot see that it's the edge of the ditch because it, they're just there. It's just like a giant square culvert.
We can probably put some object markers up.
Kind of, I mean, I don't wanna have some huge impediment that there should be. So, because if you, I'll tell you, I put a tire off on my hay rake last year and I put the hay rake down in the cabbage. I couldn't pick it out of my tractor. I mean, you do have this much room off the edge of the gravel. I mean, they are, and it's been going on for years and it's obviously not been an issue. I'm terrified of it and I think, I don't, I don't know if you can have a lower one to the ground. So, I don't know, but.
We'll put up some object markers.
Some kind of reflector. There's one before on the south side of the bridge there.
I'm sure, I'm sure Al will.
There's one or two and then way up north, north of that section line where the other bridge went out that we got signed out, there's another one there. And they're like a, it's like a four foot squared.
You know what I would do? You'd walk the road, you'd find them, then you'd scratch the road at the heel of your foot.
Well, I know where they are. I know where they're at. My, my terror is like if you move over for like a, a sprayer coming.
And they're going down.
You think you're gonna just take the edge of the ditch and straddle in the grass like you do? You're in trouble. I, I, how nobody's made an issue of it yet, I don't know. And now that they've made an issue of it in public, it needs to get taken care of. And I'm gonna get blamed. I'm gonna get blamed to have a marker, but I'll tell you what, those are dangerous because they literally are like. There's, it's.
There's no.
I don't know like years ago what they did around here because.
I know, but it's amazing because they literally are the width of the, of from shoulder to shoulder. That's.
Like, like culvert by Joey.
Yep.
You go east and north and then occurs that culvert there in that ditch. It's great.
They're not marked at all. They're not marked at all.
And they've been like that for probably forty years.
But it always runs across my mind and I'm like, I gotta, I gotta say something. We gotta mark them. I don't care.
We're slowly starting to, I mean, very, very slowly starting to take care of some of these problems, but.
There's another place down south of Gary Mosses where it turns to the east. You know, where Gary and Luke are. You can take that road all the way south and you turn east. There's a lake down there. And that's just a straight drop off. There should be a reflector there or something.
Where's that? Gary Mosses.
Gary Mosses.
South?
What is that? Fifth, Fifth Avenue?
South from Gary Moss.
How far south?
How far?
That would be four miles.
Oh, that's way down there. Well, that's passes, but it's gotta be pass there.
That's gotta be south of Larry Schwab's place.
Yes.
And then you turn and go east.
Right.
And that culvert that goes. That goes into that lake, Schwab Lake.
Yeah, that's further south, yeah.
Put a marker in that and that's a bad one.
So, yeah, give me a street avenue.
Do you know where Tom Whittaker's at?
Uh, I, I believe I know where his place is at.
Just go west.
Off of Ninety Second and.
Let's see, take the Welp Road, Skyler. Take the Welp Road and go straight west to the dead end.
Yep.
You go west and then Schwab Lake will be on the south side.
Yep.
It's, it's east.
Eighty seven or eighty, no.
I want what, eighty eight?
Yep. Cause eighty nine is federal later.
It's by the elevator string west, the elevator.
Eighty eight and fifth.
That's Schwab Lake right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a culvert that goes across and it's steeped. It's washed out. Yep, it's bad one there. You'll find it. It's easy to find.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we can.
Okay.
We'll get it.
But take a.
We'll probably put a more object marker. I know we've, we've gotta order a bunch for this, um,
This project.
Project anyway, so, I mean, we have, we have a few, uh, in the yard. So, yeah, I mean, that's what we're gonna have to do and then eventually someday.
That's okay. If you go over with a sprayer, you're going down.
Really? So.
I think with that, the issue is enough culvert problems for the day.
So.
Even on your culvert issues, Skyler, some of these culverts that you guys try to do, would it be smart to sell them out?
I talked to a guy about that. I talked to a contractor about that too and kinda just started spitballing some ideas of like, cause he does it for other counties too and he's like, depends on if there, I have to build a cofferdam or whatever. And then he's like, sometimes we just do it by the linear footage. He's like, if you get a whole bunch in an area, then we can, maybe the linear footage could go down. So, there, there's talk about it, but.
Would Rush Lowery consider doing that?
Well, I'm sure. I mean.
Within our county? You know, and that give him the work within the county or not? I don't know.
If, if he used to, I mean, uh, that's something we probably definitely wanna put out for bids, um, you know. If we're gonna do a group or if that's a route we're gonna go, but if it's just individually here and there, I mean, we could probably use it. You know, here, here and there, but I mean, we're working on culverts today where, um, Donnie's gone, but we're resetting those concrete ones. And then we're gonna go down, up to Ninth and fix the one that's washed out in the corner there. Right there, that's been flagged for three weeks now.
Right at the intersection right before my place that goes to Melvin Walls.
Oh.
Got culverts dropping through there on Mother's Day or something. The only other thing since you're there at that spot is look at those trees on the north side of the road there. And the reason why I say that is because I think that holds water there kinda part of the issue is because the trees and the grass is there. It doesn't get to the creek. It's only.
Yeah, we're actually gonna shoot some of that up there and figure out why there's one this way and then why it doesn't just.
I don't know either.
Shoot across the road there instead and go right towards the creek. I, we're, we're gonna take some elevation shots.
Something's going on there because that whole slew there.
Right.
You know, that basically leads right up to my yard. There's three culverts on that intersection. And there isn't any culverts that lead it to the south to the creek. And then on the north side of, um, seventy six there, there's all them trees there. That's all the further we have to go. Cause that whole ditch along Ninth there on the west side where his hand is there, that all sits full of water. There's three culverts there. Why it doesn't go to the creek, I don't know what happened there.
What it's soaked in?
Well, it's, I mean, there's a bunch of trees there and everything too, but for some reason, the. Yeah, there's an approach there, but when I tell you, I don't think that approach has a culvert in it going into that field. And that's probably another dam for that.
No, and that's what we're gonna look into. We're either gonna cut across, what is that, eighty seventh?
Right.
To the, to the west there, or we're gonna cut across to the, the, going into that patch or we're talking, potentially putting one there to drain that. Cause we didn't understand why there was only three culverts in that intersection and does it go from that intersection away from the creek and then follow it down? And then work its way back to the creek or is it supposed to go back that way to the creek or is it supposed to go that? So, we're gonna work on, we're working on that.
This is my confusion is you, you've got water that sits here, which that comes from the slew. That one you're not gonna get rid of. There's water that sits in this whole ditch. And there's no culvert to take it to the creek here and for here, it's water.
It's water.
If you alleviate some of the water in that ditch, that road would, would be. Would heal up a little. I mean, because it always gets a soft part too. And I, I mean, and there's culverts there. It's supposed to drain, but for some reason it's either silted in or that approaching draining it. Something's holding up.
We're gonna, we're gonna hopefully address that this week.
Well, it's like that lake is deeper up on the north of that. And then it pisses into that ditch.
Well, it is because there's a spring on the north side that feeds it up. But the biggest issue with that culvert is it rusts it out because it sits full of water. It doesn't drain out because the way, something's wrong there and it just sits full of water. When the top of that culvert rusted out, now there's big hole in it.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, so, yeah, check that out.
We're working on, we're gonna work on that.
But there is a big foam line in that ditch too, so.
Yeah, it's marked. It's to the, further to the north. I mean, everything I do, everything I do has to be located to the state age. Like, even these concrete ones, I'm pretty sure that there wasn't anything in there. I still get them all.
But you never know.
That's why sometimes things go slowly because, I mean, it is three, three days.
That's a big one though, because that's the one that my foam line comes off with couches, everybody like, so, that's like a big pair.
Well, we isn't there, but you better.
It's marked.
Well, it's there. I know it's there.
It's marked. It's been marked for a while and I refreshed it, so.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, let's.
Yeah, well, that's, that's.
We're gonna work on that this week too.
Okay.
Try to get that done.
Sounds good.
It doesn't matter. Eighty seven down, it could be, yeah.
And then at least if we hit them and they're marked, then it's down now.
That's right. Call your local.
Call your local.
Always.
It's too much stuff buried in the ground anyway, which is just another reason why it takes forever to do stuff sometimes. Anyway, um, what I was gonna bring up is since we are keeping that one motor grader back, I believe it's a good time to probably update one of our, one of our payloaders. We have one that's a two thousand twelve. So, it might not be a bad idea to think about.
Any prices on it or anything or any prices on it?
Uh, no, I mean, I really haven't done anything until we kinda get the okay, because sometimes they don't even wanna. Unless we can bid it out. I mean, if, you guys are okay if we bid it out and then if we don't like it, we don't have to take it, but.
Is that the cat or the deer?
The cat.
Cat.
So, it's. Don't quote me. It's been a while since I've been in it, but I'm, I think we're well, over five thousand, so. So, it's a lower hour machine, but I mean, it's an older machine, so.
Does that have a scale on it?
No, that one is the only one that.
Though, right?
A deer and that's the only way I'll ever buy another loader. Cause if you end up doing a contractor by the ton, how are you supposed to tell us?
Right.
You either gotta bring in a portable scale or put one in there, so. And then I would, if, if we were gonna go for it, I'd actually upsize a little bit to a loader, like a little, go a little bit bigger. Um, we're in the gravel moving business, kind of. We're not into the, might as well have a little bit bigger of a loader, so.
It's like.
Huh?
It sucks to have them small. It's better to have them big.
Sometimes, I mean, you can get too big, but I mean, we'd probably go up. I, I think ours are three and a half yard buckets now. Uh, we'd probably go up to like four and a half.
Do you have a scoop for any one of those buckets with the gravel?
Yeah, the cat does.
Okay, okay.
So, I mean, kinda be in the package of you're getting away, have to bring some, because it's set up for that, uh, V plow. I know we used it during the heavy snowstorm just two years ago or whatever, because I'm in front of that cat, but if that goes down, then that's the only thing it can hook up to is that cat. So, I wanna get everything universal, so. One breaks down, you can just move it to the next one. Not a huge family having two different. Like motor, motor graders, the front lift groups are all the same, so. One breaks down, all your attachments are the same.
They got a different hookup on the front.
Yep. They, they make like five different hookups, so. Yeah, and cat.
Can you get them as to where they're all?
Yep. You can just, you can just order it with that. I think like the John Deere, I think it's like JCB hookup or GRB or something like that. Cat uses a wedge style, but you can specify that in your bid. Cause there, you know, other manufacturers out there, there's four or five manufacturers for that, so. It's just an idea if we wanna.
I guess I don't see a problem with bidding it out. We can always reject the bids if it's too crazy, but you'd probably just do an official, like you do a blade, right? Like.
Right.
Look to me, see what they give us on maybe a trade and then upgrade for a new one, deer, cat and.
Derek, Kate, Kamatsu, all those guys. Um, there is that Sourcewell we can also go through. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that or not. It's called Sourcewell. It's a little tricky to explain, but the gist of it is Sourcewell already did all the legwork. And they got the prices from the manufacturers, what your discount's gonna be. From what I understand, sometimes the manufacturers just use that price anyway. It's, they go off like Minnesota State bid. So, I know a lot of coun- counties are starting to go to it. Takes the headache out of some of that.
So, it's more kinda like a municipal bid kinda thing?
It's like they've already kinda tell them what they're gonna give them as for a discount and everything like that, so. Um, like I said, a few counties are going to that, so if, if we wanna think about going to that, I think we should make a motion to use that if we want to. Just have a powers agreement or whatever with them. Like I said, I know the neighbors of the north are using it. Some other counties up to the north have, have used it.
So, would you pay to be a member of it or something?
Nope, it's all free. Yeah, it's just, it's, uh, yeah, I guess it's just really understands that they took all the legwork out pretty much for you. Cause like Minnesota State bid, they, they get a price. It's good for a year or two, so, for any manufacturer, but.
Well, I guess I don't see a problem with seeking bids, I guess, and just seeing what it'll look like. Doesn't even, I mean, we got twelve year old machine. We're gonna need loaders for gravel no matter what. It's just like blades. You can't let everything get too far in line.
Right.
So, what would you do? You would use this outfit and then also the dealers?
The dealers.
Get a bid from them also to see where we stand?
No, it's kind of weird because the dealers, you gotta, you use Sourcewell, but then it also goes through your dealership, so it's. It's, I wish I could explain it better. I haven't looked into it as deeply as I should have. I think, I believe John's looked into it a little deeper. Yeah, it's, they still go through, the salesman's still, you still use your same salesman and stuff like that, so. Yeah, it's just, kinda already took the legwork out for you as to what I understand.
Well, with, with the preliminary budget coming up here in July, you know, it would maybe be a good time to at least start sourcing some bids so you would have an idea, maybe at least try and put it in your preliminary budget. And by the time we do the final budget, we maybe have a better answer whether or not we're gonna cut that out or not, but preliminary budget time is the time to put those kinds of things in, so. Maybe get yourself a number before then at least, so.
Oh, I think we can. I mean, maybe, they have to be what, in July, the July meeting, right?
Yeah, the July meeting is when we'll approve the preliminary budget, but you won't actually make any final decisions until.
Right. It might be tough to get it. I mean, where that's what, three weeks?
But we've got a lot put together. It should be still.
Well, we haven't really put together a loader one yet, so.
Right, but I mean, even, even in the grand scheme of things, if you get a whole cat and deer and all, and you got at least a rough idea of what a new one's gonna cost for the size you want. I mean, you gotta get close. I mean, with a preliminary budget, if you're within a few percent, it's fine. So, I mean, you gotta know if it's a hundred fifty thousand dollar over or what they're wanting, roughly what they give you on trade just for budgetary reasons. At least you don't have to have a fine tune number, but you gotta have something reasonable. I would imagine they could probably do that before you go over the phone or make a quick trip down here next week or two. I would think so. I would think so.
Right, maybe it is, so, yeah.
Right, you don't have to hold onto a bid before the preliminary budget, but at least just get a number to work with, it's not close.
Okay, we'll do that then.
Okay.
Other than that, I think that's about everything on the list, so.
All right.
Nothing else remaining, that'll work, all right, thank you, if you guys wanna come up, it'll be, next week, we'll be working on that road, so.
Okay.
Anyone wants to come up and see the process or whatever, you know, all right, thank you, yeah.
Well, that concludes all the items on the agenda, that's the only thing remaining would be the bills.
Aaron, can I have these items too?
Yeah.
It's for our twenty-three audit. Oh, wait, one, nine, two, seven, two. You guys got the audit, two, one, two, two, this is two, just breathe.
Let's just send you a new rush.
I got.
Which time that door says, and that guy, that border guy, oh, she's the dude, that's a new guy, new girl, well, that's the woman? Yes, it's probably two meals, I would think, probably her and her boy from that, I don't understand, no, I doubt it, I'm sure it's probably two meals, maybe she was up there for two days, if not, it's a meal. First thing, was it the same, that's the same one?
Hmm?
It's the same one, they're all the same, they're all the same.
Supposed to be a copy for each of you.
Oh, I think we already had one, I think you mailed out, didn't you?
No, I gave you one this morning, but this is additional one, Bill's getting those inside in up here, so Joey types up another one for you guys, I should just quit talking.
That's good for the people who read every one of them, they don't have to say.
Wayne resigned in.
It's Friday, this is last day.
On Friday, so why did he go to a meeting in the first part of May?
Well, he got certified.
That way did he, he put his resignation in.
After his certification.
Who's that?
Can't make any sense why he went to that meeting if he knew he was gonna resign, and it was only ninety-five dollars, but it's just the idea that.
For Rob.
I think he went to body parts.
They get, they get an allowance per day for doing bucks, they don't have to show receipts on meals like Eli.
No, you don't have to show receipts.
You don't, huh? You just get a payment?
No.
We do the same thing. South Central. South Central.
Yeah, same thing with the health board too, it's usually based on the state rate, state usually goes, yeah, they, they pay you twelve bucks for lunch and fifteen for dinner or something, you spend more. What's the state rate for mileage now, it's over sixty cents, right?
Point six seven.
How much?
Sixty-seven cents.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it was a deal went up.
But they tell you too, you don't identify, they just say, pad your mileage, so, give me these receipts and your supplies, do you suggest padding, that's too much bullshit. No bill, please approve.
That's probably like Beck or Kim or.
Tell us hardware, stuff like that one.
Yeah.
Oh, they're trying to wait.
They get away with that what the media is.
Well, we're the third this month, we're opening, so.
Okay.
Earlier than usual?
Yeah, there's probably a lot of games that's been up here.
Okay. This is yours?
I got one, but it's a different, take it.
It's a different, I think you're packing. A piece of them tougher. It's different.
Gonna have to separate you two pretty soon.
There's point.
Well, I have to worry, I'm gonna be here for my. Just a few more months.
You're counting down.
Counting them down.
Gary's got a calendar, he's just exiting every day out.
Worked them off my calendar.
You're gonna miss it.
He'll call every other time, yeah, whatever.
He'll be on the agenda every meeting, wondering what the heck's going on, I'm back, when I was commissioner, we didn't have any.
I just figured it's time for somebody else to dip their hands away.
Somebody else to have all the fun, right?
Yeah.
Use Tyler technology, so, what do we use for that?
That's a soft dorm, it's talking about the exchange.
Vanguard one.
You didn't even look at it.
Just quicker than the other one.
Cause you don't know what they are.
The Vanguard is that once a year, but.
Yeah. What's Armory Angel?
That sounds like something for the sheriff's department, I'm assuming.
I'd have to look at it, I'm not sure I can.
Oh, it is, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who took over that, or is in that hall, was it Car wash building, that little coffee shop, who is that?
Is that Kettering?
Yeah, I just, I just can't, yeah, I just can't, I don't know, I don't got it.
Yeah, it'll be that Jody, Jody and Addie Kettering, he, um, he's kind of the manager for Seaview Farms, and she, um, well, they ran, they got that place northeast of Hazelton out there, like north of Philip Pullman's. They got a quarter land out there, and they got cattle and sheep and stuff, and then they opened up, they're doing kinda like a dinner special thing, and then ice cream and stuff too, ice cream. Well, they did, they had burgers on Saturday night, and now they had like chicken fajitas, like, they just make a special until it's gone kinda deal, like, they're.
Really?
Yep, Saturday to Sunday nights from like five to nine.
Well, that's good, I was kinda hoping they'd do something.
Yeah, like, I don't think they have like a full menu for food, I think they just pick something and then.
And then, that one's quicker time.
But, yeah, the, yeah, main thing is kind of like coffee and ice cream is their big deal, they got the.
That's all I thought it was.
Well, and then they just kinda started dabbling, I think, with the food here, they must've, you know, they just opened here maybe a month ago, so I think they're.
Well, he should advertise it a little bit so people know him.
Well, the big trouble is, is his wife was running in, and she had some medical troubles here, she was in the hospital, and so I'm thinking that kinda, right, so, she's kind of on mend right now, and so I'm guessing a lot of that probably got put on the back burner, she had some.
So, Aaron, what did you find out with lengthers, the water?
It was the, uh, pressure switch was out, so I changed the pressure switch, and the well worked perfectly, and we are now heroes of Langley Bay again, cause before we were jerks, we're shutting the water out, even though it's just the well.
They were taking their, uh, five gallon pails.
I know, I heard it from a few people, they were mad while we shut the water off, so we didn't shut it off, the well shut itself out, so, but, yeah, it was a, it was a bad pressure switch, and then I, I did talk to the owner of the place, and he's, he's fine with it the way it is, um.